Okay. My apologies, everyone. Thank you for the brief technology challenge, as we all face those these days in meetings. I'd like to go ahead and call the April 22nd City Council Meeting to Order at 6:05 PM. And if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We've got a good crowd tonight. Welcome, everybody. Let's see. We'll go ahead and start here with a roll call. And here in the room, Ms. Trimble, we have councilors Anderson, Savage, Sheryl Nugent, Jordan, Carlino, Campbell, and Farmer. Online are councilors Becerra and Vaseka. And tonight, councilors Melson and Jones are absent. Just want to make sure you got that before we move on.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay, you bet. All right, great. So moving on to item number two, approval of minutes. We have minutes from the March 25th, 2024 Council Meeting. Does anybody have any changes or questions from that meeting, for those minutes? Not seeing any in the room, any online? All right. Not seeing any council changes. Then we'll go ahead and those minutes will remain as submitted. Thank you. Item number three is announcing changes to the committee meeting agendas and committee membership approvals. And Claire, I believe you were going to go ahead and announce the working group.
Yes. We don't have any changes to the committee schedule for April 24th, which was what is published. However, we do have an addition of the urban camping working group. We'll have another session on May 1st, which is a Wednesday, beginning at noon. And we will publish that information within the spots where we normally publish this on the website agenda page and also on the upcoming committee schedule page. And that is not for next week, it's for the week after.
Great, thank you. And for members of the audience, we don't have a meeting next Monday because it's the fifth Monday. And so want to make sure that folks know that there's some activity the following Wednesday there. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. Appreciate that. All right. Next, we'll move on to special presentations and proclamations. And just giving a quick overview of the meeting tonight, we do have four public hearings, and I anticipate some folks in the audience are here for that. There are a couple of items under new business. And Ms. Trimble will go ahead and detail out and speak to that when we get to that agenda item. And then we do have two neighborhood council updates this evening, one from Rose Park and one from the Riverfront Neighborhood. So there are opportunities to speak on all agenda items from the public as we go through the agenda. And I'll go ahead and guide you through that. We do have a fun new light system up here that helps you guide your comments. We keep public comments to three minutes. So we'll go ahead and utilize our Jeopardy-type of system up here. And you'll see the light turn yellow and then red once you get close to three minutes there. So starting with Rose Park, if we can go up and come on up and please introduce yourselves, say your name and spell your last name, please.
I'm Audrey Hayes. And I'm on the Rose Park Neighborhood Leadership Team.
Ms. Hayes, I didn't have your microphone quite on. Would you go ahead and say your name again, please?
Yes, it's Audrey Hayes.
Thank you.
And the three initiatives our team is currently focused on are participating in the upcoming neighborhood cleanup. We're going to be tackling a vacant area within the Slant Streets portion of our neighborhood. The area is called the Slant Street Gateway, and it's located across from Mount, on Mount Avenue, across from Fire Station 2. And it will be a continuation of our work from last fall. Then we're also working on a closer alliance with the Missoula Rose Society in their efforts to keep Rose Park, our neighborhood namesake, flourishing. So one of our team members joined their monthly meeting last week and heard that the biggest need is for a fence to be built around the rose beds to prevent the deer from destroying them. So the roses are historical and they honor our veterans. So protecting them is important to the whole community. We are looking forward to further project coordination and helping with the society. And then the last thing we're working on is acquainting ourselves with the needs of the PACS and school regarding safety improvements for students and neighboring families who transfers Higgins Avenue and how those improvements can be investigated and accomplished. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here this evening. Before you sit down, I'll just go ahead and look around to see if anybody has any questions for you, if that's all right. Anybody have any questions from the says? I'm not seeing any online. All right. Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you for your service. Appreciate what you do for the neighborhood and the city. All right. And so how about the Riverfront Neighborhood? Come on up.
Hello, Danny Gunlock. That's G-U-N-D-L-A-C-H, co-chair of the Riverfront Leadership Team. Here are the highlights. So we have our general meeting Thursday, May 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00. Tentatively at Willard High School. It's been a little over a year, so we're overdue for a meeting. We will have a slightly different format this time with a small group presentation, but otherwise it's just going to be an open house format with organizations and different groups tabling at the event. There'll be Tagliari sandwiches. It should be fun. We're staying informed on transportation issues around town, especially. So we have, we're always interested in what's going on in Craig and Orange. The team in the neighborhood has expressed interest for safety improvements at that corridor. South Russell and First, that's over by the Salvation Army, there's a mountain line stop on either side of the road. That's another area of concern. That's a major crossing for people going from the neighborhood over to services on the other side. There's also bus stops on either side of the street, so people are crossing that at a very unsafe intersection. And we're trying to stay informed on what's going on with the Higgins Street redesign as well. The team crafted a layer of support for Opportunity Resources Development Site at, it says 301 First, I believe that's on Third Street. It'll include 24 units of workforce housing and numerous economic benefits. Many of you have already heard about the Silver Park Sculpture Garden. David Selvage, Associate Director of Park Systems and Services, recently gave a presentation at one of our meetings. Previously, there had been some concern from the neighborhood about the location site, and we had requested that they do a feasibility study on looking at other options. Following the results of the survey and feedback, the team seems to now support the project and the location. And a lot of neighborhood residents have also turned out to express support. Lastly, we've had people at meetings expressing concern about urban camping in the neighborhood. The team has encouraged them to submit comments to the Urban Camping Working Group. And then our team's always looking for opportunities to just stay better informed on a really complex issue. So that's all I have. Anyone has any questions?
Thank you very much. Looking around the room. Any questions? None here. Don't see any online. All right, wonderful. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate the report out. And just mentioning that there is opportunity to submit comments on Engage Missoula for just general sheltering and urban camping. And then contacting your ward representatives to make sure that specifically for the Urban Camping Working Group folks will get your message directly. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Oh, great. I'm sorry. We do have one council comment. Councilor Vaseka, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanted to let everybody know that there is an official form for reporting urban camping. And if you just Google or use your favorite search engine to look up Missoula forms, urban camping, reporting form, that is the best way to get the urban camping, I guess, notice out to city officials. And they use that to basically decide, or not decide, but to figure out where there are areas that have the most amount of it. And they're usually very, very fast at, I guess, handling the issue. And I would highly recommend using the actual form to do that. So if you just Google Missoula, City of Missoula, Urban Camping Reporting Form, that's the best way to report those.
Thank you, Councilor Vaseka. Appreciate that. All right. Great. Thank you very much for participating with your neighborhood council. And it's going to be a citywide cleanup on April 27th, so it's going to be pretty fantastic. Thank you very much. All right. So we'll go ahead then and move on to item number five, which are public hearings. State law and city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the city council and the mayor invite community comment. We'll hold the public comment, we'll hold the public hearing tonight unless there is a reason for there to be a public hearing scheduled at a later date, which will be stated as part of the presentation. And so we will start with item 5.1. That's an ordinance rezoning 1114 Poplar Street for a planned unit development overlay removal. And we have Alex Bramlett here to present on that.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Can you see the slide okay?
Yes, we can.
We're here with the city this evening because Development Services received a request from the property owner to rezone 1114 Poplar Street from R 5.4 residential with the Blossoms Bed and Breakfast Planned Unit Development Overlay to R 5.4. This rezoning will result in a standard Title 20 zoning district, which cannot be conditioned. Standard zoning districts must apply the same requirements to all parcels within the same zoning district equally. So the property is located north of Interstate 90, southeast of Van Buren Street, west of Mount Jumbo, and is within the Lower Rattlesnake Neighborhood and City Council Board One. Here's a closer view of the property, which has frontage on Poplar Street, Taylor Street, and the alley. Poplar and Taylor Streets are both classified as local streets. This property is approximately 15,597 square feet in size and contains a legal nonconforming two-unit house. The appearance of the primary structure is similar to a detached house, but the structure does contain two dwelling units. The surrounding properties contain detached houses as well. The R Missoula City Growth Policy is the applicable regional plan and recommends a land use designation of residential medium density, which is intended to fit with many already established residential neighborhoods, and acknowledge a single dwelling residential building type as the primary use with the potential for accessory dwellings. The current relatable zoning districts within this land use designation are RT 10, R 8, R 5.4, and RT 5.4. These are all residential zoning districts, and they all permit detached houses and lotline houses. And then further, RT 10 and RT 5.4 permit two-unit houses and two-unit townhouses. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property to R 5.4 residential. The proposed zoning is consistent with the residential median density land use designation. There is also a 1995 Rattlesnake Valley Comprehensive Plan, which is a neighborhood plan that is considered an attachment to the city growth policy. Some goals of the plan that are relevant to this request include encouraging the highest density of residential development in the southern portion of the Rattlesnake Valley, creating a diversity of housing opportunities, and addressing the shortage of housing for lower and moderate income households. This rezoning conserves the value of buildings and encourages the most appropriate use of the land because it would comply with the envisionment of the growth policy and the Rattlesnake Valley Comprehensive Plan. The city growth policy calls for a focus inward approach to encourage infill development and propose enhanced connectivity. The community design section of the growth policy encourages buildings where there is existing infrastructure. This property is served by city water and sewer and is currently served by city fire and police. The safety and wellness section of the growth policy encourages healthy lifestyles by promoting a complete active transportation network to increase safety for all transportation systems. Mountain Line Route 4 is roughly half a mile southwest of the subject property at East Broadway and Van Buren. And then Mountain Line Route 5 is roughly a quarter mile northwest of the property at Van Buren and Cherry Street. And there are existing sidewalks to both of these bus stop locations from the Poplar Street, the subject property. Less than half mile from the property as well is Gregory Park, Greeno Park, Waterworks Trailhead, and Mount Jumbo Trailhead. So here is the current zoning map, where you can see the property is owned R 5.4 residential with that PUD overlay. This is a small PUD that only applies to the subject property. The surrounding parcels are all zoned R 5.4 residential currently. Couple things here. Firstly, this property went through a rezoning in 2004 for the establishment of Blossoms Bed and Breakfast PUD to supplement the existing R 5.4 residential zoning and allow for a four-room bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfast is currently a conditional use in R 5.4 zoning. The removal of the PUD overlay would deem the existing bed and breakfast use a lawfully established conditional use per Title 20, which states when a use classified as conditional use under this zoning ordinance exists as conditional, such use will be considered a lawfully established conditional use. The primary reason for this rezone request is due to the first PUD condition, which states, "Development of the site shall substantially comply with the proposed site plan shown in Ordinance Attachment A." You can see Ordinance Attachment A shown on the right-hand side of the slide. Adding another structure or modifying the property beyond what is shown on the site plan cannot be approved, as it wouldn't substantially comply. So the applicant is requesting to rezone out of the PUD in order to further develop the site in compliance with the baseline R 5.4 zoning. The applicant is requesting to rezone out of that PUD for further development in compliance with R 5.4, as previously mentioned. And all the surrounding parcels are also zoned R 5.4. Here is a standard comparison between the existing and proposed zoning districts. As you can see, everything is same aside from the removal of that PUD overlay. So the setbacks are going to be the same, the heights, all of those requirements. The only difference will just be that PUD removal. Staff's recommendation is based on the review criteria provided in Title 20 zoning ordinance. So to summarize, the proposed rezoning complies with the growth policy, focus inward, and the Rattlesnake Valley Comprehensive Plan. It is served by city services, and future development would be required to meet city ordinances. The rezoning considers the location and character of the property, which is residential in nature and has easy access to urban infrastructure and services. And lastly, the recommendations of the growth policy for areas designated residential median density.
Ms. Bramlett, I'm going to interrupt you. Ms. Bramlett, I'm just going to ask you to repeat that last point you made. Sorry, your internet just kind of fuzzed out there for a second.
Oh, sorry. On this screen?
Yes.
Okay. Lastly, is that where I was?
I think so.
Okay. I'll go back a little bit further. So the rezoning considers the location and character of the property, which is residential in nature and has easy access to urban infrastructure and services. And lastly, the rezoning is in the best interest of the city because it implements the recommendations of the growth policy for areas designated for residential median density. I can't see you all. Are we still, are you still with me?
Yep. You just moved to spot zoning considerations. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. So here are the three criteria which must be met to constitute spot zoning. This rezoning will not create spot zoning because future development will comply with the zoning district, which is the same as surrounding areas. The R 5.4 zoning district is compatible with the growth policy's land use designation, and the change is consistent, again, with those surrounding areas. The planning staff recommends city council adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property located at 1114 Poplar Street from R 5.4 residential with the Blossoms Bed and Breakfast PUD overlay to R 5.4 residential. And that concludes staff's presentation. The owners are present in the room. And I do have a, whenever that happens, a presentation that I'm going to share for them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. All right. Opportunity for the sponsors, owners of the property, to come up and speak now if you so wish. Yeah, come on up. Yeah, come on up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Troy Savage, S-A-V-A-G-E. And I have a three-minute presentation. Made it as short as I could, respect for you and your time. So you can start your timers as soon as that thing comes up on there.
You're on.
Next slide. Alex? Okay. Okay, so this whole thing starts back a while. Go ahead. It's going to be fast. This is the property in 1910. That's the guy who built it, John West's wife and her son. Next. This is the completed property. We bought it in 1989. There were a few changes to it, but basically this is what it looked like. Go ahead. Unfortunately, in 2003, we had a fire. And I don't know if you guys remember that, but it started, oh, you know, out in the front porch, out in the bushes. And we actually are not sure of what the cause was, but it burned up about a third of the house. Go ahead. So it put us in a tough spot. Insurance covered about half of it. It's a Craftsman style, so it was very expensive to redo. Not sure what to do about it. It was historical. And so we had a friend who recommended a bed and breakfast. And so that's what we did, or at least we tried to. Go ahead. So we were here about 20 years ago, next month. How about that? I was standing right here. And we did get approval for a bed and breakfast because it was not allowed at the time. So that's why there's this PUD overlay. Go ahead. My cat is unanimous, by the way. Anyway. So this was the finished product. We're really proud of it. We received a historical preservation award in 2005 for it. And it was a real, I kind of almost looked like, it gives us a big smile. It was a big community event. It was a real nice thing to do. But go ahead. So we ran the bed and breakfast and during COVID, during those difficult times, we shut it down. Our family moved in. There's three generations of us living there. And my wife and I, the reason we want to do this is because we want to build a garage with the apartment of it, and we're going to move out and give the kids the space at the house. Go ahead, Alex. This time to switch slides doesn't count against my three minutes, by the way.
You're part of the presentation, so I was just teasing you. I turned off the beeper for you.
This is, this is the property looking down on the house from the Google image, and that's the yard beside it. And you see the secret car garage in the back with the parking lot. Go ahead, click it, Alex. And that's where we planned to build the garage in the apartment. With your approval, maybe we'll get another, plus I'll get another 20 years, if we're lucky, living up there and with our family on this location. Go ahead, Alex. Last slide. So we really want to thank Alex because she's great to work with. I want you guys to know that. And thanks for the three minutes. And thanks to you guys for listening to me. And I'm open for questions.
Great. Councilor Carlino?
Thank you both for the presentation. I was wondering, we had this exact property come up at council last year to help establish this historical marker here because of the cemetery that's beneath.
Right.
And the old Chinese cemetery. Do you all have plans to address that? It looks like this might be doing further development right on top of people's bodies.
Yeah, the, the, you know, we talked about this 20 years ago, too. You know, same discussion, right? Because we put it a rock wall along it, stuff like that, so we had to excavate. And the graveyard, I don't know, don't have a slide of it, but it does cut the corner of the property. You know, the actual border of the graveyard. What that really means, we don't really know. But when we put this apartment, we are going to have to dig, and we're going to follow all the guidelines and rules of digging. It's an approved thing to do, but if we find something, we stop and let everybody know to come and check it out. That's the plan.
Do we follow up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have the exact, like, the exact line of the property? I have it pulled up here on my screen, but I'm wondering if the cemetery overlaps with where this proposed development is.
The, Alex had it, one of her slides. I'm not sure.
I didn't have it. I don't have the one with the actual line handy. I can try and find it. It's part of the building permit review. So when, when a building permit is submitted, a condition is that someone does need to be on-site during the excavation to ensure that if human remains are come across, there's, the proper process is in place to make that happen, which we talked about. And you know that, you had to do that 20 years ago. So I can try and find the site plan if that's helpful, but I don't have it handy. If you give me a minute.
I don't know if actually the line is pretty close to where the building's planned to be dug. I don't know if it's actually in it, or, and I don't know how big of a trench they dig, so. It's close, though.
All right. Sounds like we'll review that as part of the building permit review.
And also the, the line on the cemetery, from what I understand, it's not exact either. It's, it's all kind of like a guess.
Makes sense. All right. Are there other council questions? Not seeing any here in the room. How about online? Any council questions? All right. Not seeing any further questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Savage. Appreciate you both being here.
My pleasure.
All right. So then we'll go ahead and hear the main motion for this agenda item. And I will look to Land Use and Planning Chair, Councilor Nugent.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Recommended motion is have council adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property located at 1114 Poplar Street, legally described as lots 11 through 14 and block 133 of Woody Edition, located in Section 22, Township 13 North, Range 19 West, PMM, from R 5.4 residential Blossoms Bed and Breakfast Planned Unit Development Overlay to R 5.4 residential.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion is on the floor. And so now we'd like to open it up to public comment for items on this agenda item. Is there anybody here wishing to give public comment for this agenda item? Okay, not seeing any in the room. How about online? All right. Not seeing any online either. So we'll go ahead then and bring it back to council, see if there's any discussion questions. Councilor Carlino?
Yeah, normally I think, like, we, the local government shouldn't get in the way of people being able to do things with a property like this. But I, I feel like most of us would not accept developing over most people's graves. And I have a hard time making an exception for doing that in certain cases. And perhaps that's not even a criteria that's being allowed to be chosen on here. But for that reason, I don't think I could necessarily support this, although I think everybody has got goodwill and good intent. And people should just be able to, you know, build things on their property if they want to. But in this particular case, over a grave site and a historical marker that we just established last year, I just don't feel comfortable with allowing more development over, over this cemetery.
Thank you for your comment, Councilor Carlino. Are there other comments? Councilor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Could somebody on staff explain the building permit process and someone being present during the excavation? I hadn't realized, I guess to follow up on Councilman Carlino's question, I hadn't realized that was part of the building permit process.
That is part, it was what we discussed kind of at the preliminary phases of this project, knowing that they wanted to remove the PUD overlay in order to kind of free up the site plan to have a little bit more flexibility and not be so tied to what the PUD allowed. And at that point, we did touch base with, with the whole group as, but then also Elizabeth Johnson was present, too, and let us know that they, you know, specifically, I'm not familiar with the exact process. I just know that we as planning condition that permit, and then there does need to be an excavator on site. And they are just there to, you know, review the whole thing and make sure that nothing is being dug up or hit, or, that's my understanding. I haven't personally permitted one with that condition. So as a kind of actual specific process, I don't know how much further that looks.
Is that, any follow-up questions? Nope. Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? All right. Not seeing any. How about online? Any comments or questions from council online? Okay, not seeing any then. We'll go ahead and move on to a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble, when you're ready.
Beginning a roll call vote on item 5.1, the ordinance rezoning 1114 Poplar Street, beginning with Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Sheryl?
Yes.
Yes.
And Vaseka.
Yes.
And that is eight in favor, two opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Tremble. Okay, that item passes. We'll move on to agenda item 5.2, which is an ordinance amending title 15.32.010 E and H, repealing asbestos requirements for building permits. So we have Mr. Walter Benziger tonight. When you're ready.
Hi, I'm Walter Benziger. I'm the Deputy Director of Development Services, and with me I have Christina Cottington, who is also our Chief Building Official. Okay. Let's see. Can everybody see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So tonight we're asking City Council to consider repealing a portion of section 1532010 of Title 15 that is related to asbestos requirements for building permits. Our goal is to amend and repeal sections E and H to no longer require the city to enforce the state permitting and surveying requirement administered by the Montana DEQ's Asbestos Control Program. Just to give you a little bit of background, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the Asbestos Control Act of Montana have delegated to the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, the rulemaking authority to ensure a clean, safe environment for the people of Montana. As part of this responsibility, Montana DEQ is charged with administering the following regulations related to asbestos. National Emission Standards for Hazardous Air Pollutants, or Nisha, Nisha 40 SFR 61 Subparts A and M. Administrative Rules of Montana, or ARM 17.74, Subchapters III on Asbestos Control, and Montana Code Annotated, MCA Title 75, Part V, Asbestos Control. Essentially, the DEQ Asbestos Control Program is responsible for issuing asbestos permits and demolition permits. The, the program reviews and approves renovations and demolition projects as they relate to asbestos that fall under federal and state rule. The responsibility of these, of the asbestos rules, all buildings, regardless of age or construction type, must have an asbestos inspection by an accredited inspector prior to the initiation of any renovation or demolition work. If asbestos is present and removal is required, an asbestos project permit application must be submitted to the DEQ 10 working days prior to planned renovation or demolition activities. Both the building owner and operator share the responsibility of notifying DEQ and making sure DEQ requirements are met. Exceptions, the state of Montana, asbestos regulations do not apply to private residences that meet the residential exception. This is typically owner occupied, single, one and two family homes. DEQ recommends to have materials tested for asbestos prior to any renovation or demolition activities for these situations. Currently, the City of Missoula Ordinance 3368, which was adopted in February 11th of 2008 and is included in Title 15, Sections 1532010 E and H, requires persons applying for a building permit or a demolition permit to provide proof that a trained asbestos inspector has surveyed the area of the building affected by the proposed work before the building permit can be issued. Ordinance 3368 is duplicative of the state requirements regarding surveying and permitting with respect to state DEQ requirements. Upon review, the City of Missoula appears to be the only major municipality that has requirement to provide proof prior to issuance of a building or demolition permit. Osmann, Billings, Helena, and Great Falls, as well as Libby, do not independently enforce DEQ requirements. They provide notification to the owner operator of DEQ requirements in writing at the time of permitting. The proposed change that we are asking for removes local administrative requirements of the state asbestos program and leaves the enforcement to the state DEQ. The city requirement is an additional barrier to the applicant's ability to pull a building or demolition permit in a timely manner. This in particular impacts HVAC and building, plumbing permits for commercial projects. Typically, when permits are not pulled, it severely impacts the city's ability to ensure buildings and systems are properly installed, resulting in a safe and sanitary built environment for occupants. The result, compliance, if, if we are to repeal Sections E and H, compliance will continue to remain the applicant's responsibility to comply with state law. Language requiring, requiring applicants to comply with current state law requirements would be substituted into Title 15. We would also, at the time of, of permit application, include language directing city building permit applicants and holders to the DEQ regarding asbestos permitting requirements that will continue to be noticed. This is an example of some of the other municipalities of what they include at the permitting process as a notice to the applicant. The proposed amendment and repealed sections will remove a permit application hurdle that is affecting permit complacency and encourage applicants to apply for required permits and inspections. The revised language will simplify the permit application process and remove barriers for the community while still encouraging compliance with both state and city ordinances. And in conclusion, we would recommend a motion amending Sections 153210 E and H to remove the asbestos requirement for the building permit. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Benziger. We will go ahead then and move on to questions from council. Does any council members have questions from Mr. Benziger? Not any in the room. How about online? Okay. Not seeing any online either. Then we'll go ahead and hear the main motion. Gosh, is this Land Use and Planning? Is this?
I think it came through us.
All night, all night.
No, there's at least one that is a hell of a piece of night.
All right, thank you, Mayor Davis. The recommended motion that I'll put on the floor is City Council adopting ordinance amending Title 15, Chapter 15.32, Section 1532010 Missoula Municipal Code entitled Building Permits Generally to repeal Sections of Title 153210 E and H, requiring persons applying for a building or demolition permit to provide proof that a trained asbestos inspector has surveyed the areas of the building affected by the proposed repair, alteration, renovation, remodel, demolition, lifting, burning, or moving before a building permit can be issued, and repeal Title 153210H. The building inspector shall not issue a building or demolition permit as set out in this section to erect, repair, alter, renovate, remodel, demolish, lift, burn, or move any building unless an asbestos survey has been conducted on the areas of the building affected by the proposed repair, alteration, renovation, remodel, demolition, lifting, burning, or moving, and adding reference to Montana Code Annotated.
Wonderful. Thank you, Counselor Nugent. So a motion is on the floor. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and, and ask folks that are here to give public comment to come on up to the microphone. All right, not seeing any in the room, or is there anybody online that wishes to speak to this agenda item this evening? All right. Not see, oh, yes, Mr., oh, there's one in the room. And Mr. Larson, hold on one quick second. We've got somebody in the room, and then we'll get right back to you.
Apologies to the participants online. My name is James Crosby, and I would like to speak to this. With some experience in construction, I don't know of any contractors who will willingly take on extra costs on their project. And to include language that says very strongly, you should follow the rules, we mean it, I think, especially with Earth Day on our calendar right now. I think to have something that says you must follow the rules with no proof opens the door for reckless demolition and a lot of asbestos released into the environment. So it does slow down construction. It does slow down permitting, but we owe it to our earth to make responsible decisions. And corporations and individuals have proven over and over again that without oversight and without accountability, unfortunately, we do not often make the right choices. So thank you very much for hearing my comment.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Crosby. All right. Mr. Larson, online, please go right ahead.
Hi, Matt Larson, Ward 3. Yes, they just gave out $4 million settlements to all the estates for all the survivors of asbestos related damages to BNSF just recently. I think we should just be vigilant to releasing more asbestos into people's environments here, just as the last commenter said. I don't see why we should be loosening any regulation or leaving stuff up to the state, especially as the, you know, city loves to play bolly with the state in PR games, saying, placing blame for tax, tax, tax schemes and raises and lowers and stuff like that, like if, if, if it's a way to keep the, the state in check in some, in some fashion, especially as it concerns asbestos, I don't see why it's a bad thing to keep, keep doing as we have been doing. But that's my thoughts.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Larson. Other public comments this evening? All right, not seeing any additional in the room and not seeing any additional online. Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and then we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Any comments or questions from council? Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Walter, you referenced in your presentation that Missoula is the only municipality that has this state regulation codified in our local codes. Does DEQ at the state level have any concerns, or are there, is there any data on adoption in other communities? Like, is this a problem because it's not in the code in Great Falls that DEQ is aware of?
I've not had that specific conversation with DEQ regarding issues in other municipalities, but however, we checked with the other municipalities. Aaron Bowman, our, he's our supervisor for plan review. He had made contact with the other municipalities and spoke with them regarding this, and most of them agreed that it wasn't an issue for them. Christina, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, thanks, Walt. I just wanted to add that we do take asbestos control very seriously in Missoula, and our inspectors in the field do still have the ability to request a copy of the asbestos report anytime we see somebody performing demolition work that might have asbestos requirements at play. And we also have the ability to issue a stop work order and report them to the DEQ for noncompliance. And there already is, you know, a mechanism in place from the DEQ that will penalize people that are not performing work in accordance with their regulations pretty quite heavily. And they have administrative penalties up to $10,000 per day for violation, up to a maximum of $80,000. Civil penalties up to $25,000 a day, and criminal penalties that can result in a misdemeanor charge of $500. So I think there, there is a lot of, there are a lot of mechanisms in place to keep contractors accountable and keep our community clean and safe.
Thank you, Ms. Cottington. We have a question from Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am, mayor. I'll just comment that I'm in support of this repeal. I think anytime we have an opportunity to reduce red tape here locally, cut the bureaucracy, and, you know, try to further even to the smallest degree, a degree of expedited review of building permits, development review, what have you, we should take that opportunity. I think in this particular case, I do believe there's enough oversight at the state and federal level, DEQ and federal regulations that would allow us to go ahead and forego this burdensome review process as it currently exists under current city ordinance. So very supportive of this measure and anything we do in such a way that maintains public health and safety, yet streamlines development review for City of Missoula. I'll be for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Campbell. Other comments? All right. Seeing none in the room. Any councilor comments online? All right. Not seeing any, then we'll go ahead and move on to a roll call vote. Ms. Tremble.
Beginning a roll call vote on item 5.2, an ordinance amending Title 15 to repeal asbestos requirements for building permits, beginning with Becerra.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sika?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
And that passes with 10 in favor.
Great, thank you very much, and thanks to the staff for your presentation and to the public commenters for your public comment this evening. All right, moving on to our next public hearing. This is item 5.3, Funding Recommendations for the United Application Program Year 2024. And we have several people on the agenda, and I believe Kendra Lissam is here to present. Take it away, Kendra.
Yeah, I'm going to pass it to Frankie Louington. He's here to present on our behalf.
All right, Frankie, thank, please go ahead and just introduce yourself and take it away.
Can you, can you all hear me and see the slides?
We can see the slides. We can't hear you very well, so maybe think about holding your microphone up to you, but we can see the slides.
Is this any better?
It sure is. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all so much, Mayor Davis and the council. My name's Frankie Louington. I'm an associate with Root Policy Research. We are a housing research and community planning firm based in Denver, Colorado, and we had the pleasure of helping the City of Missoula develop their 2024-28 Consolidated Plan, 2024-25 Annual Action Plan, and the Fair Housing Equity Plan. So the requested action tonight is for City Council to approve, again, the 2024-28 Consolidated Plan, 2024-25 Annual Action Plan, the Fair Housing Equity Plan, and a resolution to enable staff to execute contracts. So I'm just going to provide a very high level overview of our community engagement approach, primary findings in the needs assessment and market analysis of the consolidated plan, the consolidated plan goals that we developed, the Fair Housing Equity Plan findings and goals, and then I'm going to hand it back to Kendra to walk through the annual action plan and projects. So for community engagement, we applied a three pronged approach. So we had resident focus groups, stakeholder consultations, and a housing and community need survey. For the resident focus groups, we worked with several local organizations to help us recruit residents to better understand their housing needs and challenges. These were conversations with low to moderate income families, seniors, residents living with disabilities, as well as unhoused residents. We had approximately 50 participants across the five meetings. For stakeholder consultations, this is a HUD requirement. So we had interviews and meetings with north of 40 stakeholders representing over 25 organizations across the Missoula community. And then to ensure broader representation and the opportunity to participate for the entire Missoula community, we had a housing and community need survey available that allowed residents and stakeholders to identify housing, neighborhood and community needs, identify fair housing issues, as well as what outcome should be prioritized as a result of the city's HUD funding. And we just had, we had approximately 730 individuals respond to the survey. So moving on to the needs assessment and market analysis, so we found cost burden, which is when a household spends more than 30% of their gross household income on housing, the most common problem among low and moderate income households. Approximately 10,000 Missoula households, making less than or equal to 80% of the area meeting income, have housing needs. And then when we separate this by tenure, cost burden is the greatest housing challenge faced by homeowners, while renters, under 80% of AMI, are more likely to experience severe cost burden, which is when a household spends more than half of their gross household income on housing. Single mothers fleeing and surviving domestic violence, residents living with disabilities, as well as indigenous, elderly, refugee, veteran, LGBTQIA+, and formerly incarcerated residents disproportionately experience housing challenges in Missoula. And then data show that residents of color disproportionately experience housing problems at a higher rate compared to their white counterparts across all income categories. at a higher rate compared to their white counterparts across all income categories. Throughout our community engagement process, the four needs before you kind of kept bubbling to the top. So greatest needs were increasing the supply of affordable home ownership and rental housing opportunities, increase access to mental health services and addiction treatment services, increase access to more and higher quality childcare centers and opportunities, as well as street and sidewalk improvements in neighborhoods that are either lacking these facilities or don't have them at all. So moving to the market analysis, we found the median home value in Missoula increased by 40%, while rents increased by 43% between 2010 and 2021. A rental gaps analysis that we performed for these plans found a shortage of approximately 3,460 affordable rental units for households that are making less than $25,000 in Missoula. And then overall, across all income, all income brackets, we found a gap of 1,441 units available to renter households at affordable price points. So as a result, rental subsidies have become less effective, and we heard this a lot through our conversations with residents. When people are finally able to secure a housing choice voucher, a lot of them had difficulty actually utilizing that voucher. In the Missoula urban area, the median sales price has increased approximately 80% over the last five years. To afford the 2022 median home price in Missoula, which I believe is $520,000, a household would need to make an income of approximately $161,000 to afford that home and not be cost burdened. And we found permit data shows that the city has cut pace with its projected housing supply needs. However, there's still a significant gap for housing that is affordable to residents making less than or equal to 30% of AMI. So considering the data that we found, as well as our community engagement findings, we developed four goals for the consolidated plan. Goal one is housing options, and this includes rental housing as well as home ownership. So it's increase and preserve affordable housing options for extremely low, low, and moderate income households, emphasizing accessibility, affordable rentals for low-income families with children, energy efficiency, and proximity to community amenities and services. Goal two is supporting vulnerable populations, so improving housing stability for individuals and households with critical needs, particularly those experiencing or at risk of houselessness by creating permanent supportive housing and providing emergency and transitional housing services. Goal three is community services. This is addressing critical community needs by funding gaps in services, again, for extremely low, low, and moderate income individuals and households. And then goal four is just a planning and administration goal, which helps ensure the successful implementation of the three aforementioned goals. So as developed concurrently with the city, excuse me, with the consolidated plan is the Fair Housing Equity Plan. So early last year, HUD published a proposed rule, a new proposed rule for affirmatively furthering fair housing in accordance with the Fair Housing Act. So as a recipient of federal funding, the city is obligated to affirmatively further fair housing. So putting this plan together, the city looks at how to advance equity in housing, community development programs, as well as residents' access to well-resourced areas, opportunity, and other community assets. So again, through the community engagement process, we got information that helped develop this plan. We looked at fair housing data and then identified fair housing issues and established goals to address those issues. And as part of the proposed rule, the HUD was looking for a greater integration of the Fair Housing Equity Plan with the consolidated plan. So these fair housing goals that have been developed with city staff are incorporated into the consolidated plan as well as the annual action plan. So I will jump into primary findings. So the most significant challenge identified by residents and stakeholders is the lack of affordable housing available in Missoula. Several factors were identified as impacting this development, but mainly we heard lack of available land and infrastructure, high development costs, community opposition, and lack of resources. Again, mental health services, chemical dependency services, and affordable childcare options were identified as the greatest community needs. And then residents and stakeholders expressed an interest in seeing a variety of new housing types or more housing types that addressed the needs of lower-income residents, which included low-barrier supportive housing, transitional housing, as well as innovative housing types such as land trusts and shared equity housing models. We also heard from stakeholders and residents that as the City of Missoula grows and becomes more diverse, there is a need for more resources dedicated to interpretation and translation services to ensure that residents who don't speak English don't, not just know about the services that are available, but can access them. And then there was a general need for more education and training around tenant rights, fair housing, and reasonable accommodation processes. In our Housing and Community Need Survey, we found nearly four in 10 resident respondents reported experiencing themselves or knowing someone who has experienced housing discrimination when looking for housing in Missoula over the last five years. Tied to the previous bullet, we also asked a follow-up question to residents who have identified that they have experienced housing discrimination and asked what they did about it. A common answer was nothing. I didn't know what to do. So this is directly tied back to that first point. And then a quarter of, over a quarter of resident respondents reported being displaced from their housing situation in Missoula over the same time period. I mentioned that part of the equity, Fair Housing Equity Plan is looking at access to opportunity. So for education, primary finding, Missoula students have higher levels of proficiency across race and economic status than peer districts, as well as the state of Montana. However, white students have substantially higher proficiency rates than all other student groups by race and income in Missoula schools. Related to employment, indigenous, black, and Hispanic-Latino residents have the lowest levels of market, labor market engagement, as well as the smallest proportion of those with a college degree. Access to transportation, we, residents and stakeholders provided mixed reactions to the city's transportation system. Almost everyone appreciated that the transportation system is free, and if you're in kind of the central city in Missoula, you can access a lot of places quickly and efficiently. But others wanted to see stronger connections, bus routes between affordable housing developments and amenities and services, as well as better signage and safer and more accessible bus stops. Related to disproportionate housing needs, we found that African-American, black, and indigenous households are much more likely to experience severe cost burden than their non-Hispanic white counterparts. We found significant gaps in home ownership for indigenous and African-American black households in Missoula, again, compared to their non-Hispanic white counterparts. Gaps also exist in home ownership for Hispanic households. Indigenous-headed households, students, lower-income households, and households with a member living with a disability were the most likely to report they'd experienced housing discrimination. And then we also looked at fair housing complaint data provided by HUD. And between 2019 and 2023, 11 fair housing complaints were filed in the City of Missoula. Most of these complaints were on the basis of disability. So as a result of our findings, we identified six impediments to fair housing. So the first, shortage of affordable, accessible housing units, discrimination in rental transactions, barriers to home ownership, disparate access to opportunity, lack of access to fair housing resources, and lack of access to translation and interpretation services. So moving back to my comment about integration of the consolidated plan and equity plan, Fair Housing Equity Plan, the goals here in blue are the Fair Housing Equity Plan goals, and they are under the umbrella of the consolidated plan headings that are in green. So the first Fair Housing Equity Plan goal is implementing current policy and programmatic actions that aim to improve housing choice and explore new strategies that expand access to opportunity for Missoulians and protected-class populations. Under goal two, increase educational opportunities and resources to improve understanding of tenant rights, fair housing laws, and other housing resources in the Missoula community. And then under the umbrella of community services, increase access to services for limited English proficiency and refugee residents by providing translation and interpretation resources. So with that, I will hand over the annual action plan overview and projects to Kendra or Karen.
Thanks, Frankie. I'm Karen Gasvota, a grants administrator with the city. So the city will use the consolidated plan as a guide to award federal dollars for eligible projects for the next five years, and these projects are reported in our annual action plan. This year, we received 12 applications for our annual unified application round with requests that totaled 2.2 million for our CDPG Home and Affordable Housing Trust Funds. CDPG and Home allocations remain about the same each year, around $800,000, which means that the funds aren't adjusted for inflation. So ultimately, we're having to do more with less each year. And budgeting for CDPG and Home happens at the national level in HUD's annual budget process, and from there, HUD has an in-depth and standardized criteria to direct allocation amounts. Even though the amounts stay relatively the same, the funding is a constant source for external funding for community partners. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund varies each year to, depending on the annual budget process, city land sales and other factors, but the fund is allocated a minimum of $100,000 from the general fund annually. So the projects recommended by the scoring committee to fund the CDPG and Home Funds, which will be reported to HUD in the Program Year 2024 Action Plan, include $100,000 for HRC's housing rehab loan program to benefit homeowners who earn 80% AMI or less, $75,000 for improving home access and the installation of wheelchair ramps for low-to-moderate income seniors and people with disabilities, $410,000 for the rehab and preservation of rental homes at Homewood Orchard Gardens, and $181,000 for the fireweed apartments, $230,000 for the North Missoula Community Development Corporation to purchase a three-lot property that will preserve the existing affordable rental home through a community land trust. This will also ensure the affordability of any future development of homes on that property. $19,000 to support NMCC with their ongoing operating expenses, and $92,000 is recommended from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for United Ways Housing Solutions Fund for rental assistance to support people earning 60% AMI or below. So the funding of these projects is expected to provide approximately, we can go to the next slide. Five loans to homeowners for rehabilitation, the improved access to five homes, the preservation of 47 rental homes, the purchase of a rental home on a three-lot property with a potential future development in a land trust that provides long-term affordability, and the support of approximately 80 individuals who are facing the risk of houselessness. So the next slide, the recommended motion is to adopt a resolution to approve the plans to direct staff to negotiate the funded project agreements and to authorize the mayor to sign them. Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you very much, Kendra. So looking to, let's see, we normally would have Counselor Jones as the Housing Development and Community Programs Committee Chair. President Sherrill, would you like to go ahead and take it away? Thank you.
I recommend that we adopt the 2024 to 2028 Consolidated Plan and the 2024 Equity Plan, and granting approval of the Missoula City, the City of Missoula Unified Application Round Year 2024, awarding Affordable Housing Trust Fund Home Investment Partnership Program and Community Development Block Grant Funds to certain organizations, directing staff to negotiate contracts and agreements, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contracts and agreements with said organizations.
All right, great. Thank you very much. So there is a motion on the floor, and we'll go ahead and open it up to public hearing and public comment, please. Anybody here in the room wish to speak to this agenda item? Okay, come on up. Please identify yourself and spell your last name, please.
Joe Strickland. And where's the money coming from? For all these, for all this, where's the money coming from?
Sir, this is not a back and forth, but I'll give you the answer. It is mostly through federal allocations of dollars.
So this is through grants and not taxes?
That is correct. This is because we are an entitlement city, so we are an administrator of federal entitlement funds, and that is the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Partnership Program Grant.
Okay, so eventually taxpayers are paying for it, we as taxpayers. And as we go along into all these programs, is the goal to make retired people, seniors, the taxpayers fall into these different categories that we need this funding for ourselves?
Like I said, sir, this isn't a back and forth in terms of, we'll take it away and take your public comment.
Oh, very good.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comments this evening?
Howdy, everybody. Eric Legbold, LEG, V-O-L-D. I am the Director of Impact at United Ways, and I just wanted to thank you for your consideration and hopefully your support of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Money is going to the Housing Solutions Fund. If there are any questions, I am here to respond. I am working on getting a more granular report for you, Counselor Savage. No? Fantastic.
Oh, Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Would you explain for anybody who's in the audience might not know what the Housing Solutions Fund is?
Sure. The Housing Solution Fund is a flexible financial support mechanism for Missoula County residents. It offers support to approved households for housing barriers such as rental assistance and deposits, rent and utilities and arrears, reunification costs with support systems, personal identification fees, and other similar challenges. The way that this operates is through the Missoula Coordinated Entry System, where case managers are able to direct individuals, their clients, to the Coordinated Entry System's main door of the Housing Solutions Fund, which is at the Human Resource Council's 211 Department, our community's referral and reference network. From there, assessments are made, and referrals are made with those that are denied, and then those that are approved, they are then provided those resources. Those resources go directly to the vendor or the agency that is responsible for that housing cost. From there, others are provided resources that might be able to help facilitate their needs. Any other questions? I'll just leave it to this. Since November 2021, we have provided $357,000 to over 490 households, and this is not just individuals, these are households. And the focus of this is through prevention and diversion. Upwards of 80% are preventative-based. So we are helping to prevent individuals from falling into the housing system, which is a multiplier when you talk about households. It's not just one person, it might be a household That it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legbold. I appreciate that. Before I move on to the next public comment, I do want to clarify for members of the public that I did say that these grant allocations were from the CDPG and Home Funds, and that is true. The program we were just speaking to, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Funds, in fact, is funded from locally, that is an ordinance that was is funded from locally, that is, an ordinance that was created here in Missoula to create an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The ordinance requires that city council or that the city, it implores that the city fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund by $100,000 annually. And when we have the opportunity to fund that fund through the sale of properties, we try to do that, but we haven't been able to get that achieved for some time, but did want to clarify that for members of the public. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to other public comment and looking around the room here to see if there are folks in the room that wish to speak to this agenda item. Okay, not seeing anybody in the room, then online, Ms. Trujillo. Looks like you're working on getting unmuted there.
Good evening, everyone. We wanted to say thank you for this entire process. We were engaged, I'm sorry, wow. My name is Karissa Trujillo, I'm the Executive Director of Homeward. My last name is T R U J I L L O. And just want to thank everyone for their hard work on this. Homeward was an active participant in the consolidated plan process, and we really appreciate the city staff taking time to read those applications and making the tough decisions on funding. Because we charge below market rents, but the repair and replacement costs on our properties are the same, like for a new roof as they are for those that have market rate rents, it's really critical for us to have this community investment in our properties. And Orchard Gardens and Fireweed Court here in Missoula are in need of some really important replacements like new roof and new sidewalks, and we just really appreciate this opportunity and the time spent on these applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Others online wishing to provide public comment this evening? All right, not seeing any then. That will conclude the public hearing on this agenda item, and we'll bring it back to council to see if anybody has any comments. Counselor Cheryl.
Thanks. I actually just wanted to thank our partners in this. We have, as if anyone's reading the news or everyone around this horseshoe knows, we spend, have been spending a great amount of time talking about houselessness and what we do about it and how we solve for it, and keeping people housed is a big part of that so that crisis does not get worse. And all of these partners that are at the table are part of that solution, and I just appreciate the work that they do, and I want to make sure to give a shout out to Homeward, United Way, and everyone else that's working on this issue in our community.
Great, thank you very much. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate your comments, Madam Mayor, referring to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and clarification on that, because obviously, you know, that is from our general fund as part of the annual allocation, and that's something we're going to have to address coming up for fiscal year '25. It's going to be a tough budget year, and you know, we'll have to see how that plays out. So I do have a concern with depletion of the finance that currently sits now. You know, at the end of the day, though, I think, you know, this is an appropriate use of that particular fund for this particular project at the United Way, so I'll be in support, but just mindful that, you know, we've got some tough conversations coming up for fiscal year '25. You know, I don't think, you know, we could take anything off the table in regards to, you know, we're doing what the people's money, when time comes for the next fiscal year. Also, there is the matter of the properties on West Broadway that haven't sold, as you mentioned, there's the idea of, you know, trying to sell the City of Missoula's hotel property that we've, you know, bear of worse invested in a few years back, that still has to be sold. And those dollars go to this Affordable Housing Trust Fund is a good thing, but right now it's kind of, is why I see it pie in the sky that, you know, could be there for us. I could see a windfall that go in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but the reality is, it's not there yet. So I think, you know, although I'm concerned with depletion of the trust fund, if this is a program that, you know, could pay dividends for people of limited income, then I would see this as a fair use of those dollars, so I'll, at the end of the day, be in support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Becerra?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I just want to lend my gratitude to staff for all their work on this, getting us in a situation and a position where we can work with our partners and the community to do the great work that they do. So I am happy to support this motion, and again, I want to thank staff and all our partners and the community. We know we can't do this alone, and so we count on our partners to help out, and, you know, we're lucky to receive some of these funds that can help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Becerra. Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I would just echo my colleagues, and I just want to say thank you to all the great community partners who participated in this and who are receiving funds and continuing to do great things in our community. Missoula would not be the place it is without all of you. I also think that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has done some of the best things we've gotten to vote on on council while I've been a member. And the thing we're voting on tonight, the item we're voting on tonight, is essentially either getting people into housing or letting people keep their housing. That is it at its most basic level, and I can't think of a better way to spend the money in that fund than to support a program like that.
Thank you for your comments. Any others? Not seeing any here in the room. Any online? Any counselor comments online? All right. Great, thanks, everybody. We'll go ahead then and move to a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble?
All right, voting on item 5.3, the funding recommendations for the Unified Application Program Year 2024, beginning with Campbell.
Yes.
Alino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Bazika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Becerra?
Yes.
And that's unanimous with 10 in favor.
All right, thank you very much. I also want to extend my appreciation for the organizations that we have the opportunity to partner with to do this good work for folks all across Missoula, including children, folks that are getting into a home for the first time, and seniors alike, so appreciate the support and the partnership. And thank you to the staff for your presentation as well. All right, we'll go ahead then and move on to item 5.4. Item 5.4 is an ordinance to rezone 1010, 1020, and 1030 Reserve Street from B3-2 Business Mixed Use/DE-C Design Excellence Overlay Corridor Typology 4 to C2-3 Community Commercial - DE-C Design Excellence Overlay Corridor Typology 4. And we have Zoe Walters here for the staff presentation.
Yep, thank you. All right, hello, I'm Zoe Walters, Associate Planner in Community Planning, Development and Innovation. Development Services has received a request from Joe Dinner of IMAG, representing Jeff Newland of Smithy's Car Wash, to rezone the subject properties located at 1010, 1020, 1030 Reserve Street. This property is proposed to be rezoned from B3-2 Business Mixed Use with Design Excellence Overlay Corridor Typology 4 to C2-3 Community Commercial with Design Excellence Overlay Corridor Typology 4. The rezoning will result in a standard zoning district under Title 20, which cannot be conditioned. Standard zoning districts must apply the same requirements to all parcels within the same zoning district equally. Title 20 states a formal protest petition opposing a zoning amendment must be submitted to the zoning officer or on the public record before the city council's vote, allowing sufficient time for the city clerk to determine the validity of the petition. A protest petition is valid if signed by the owners of 25% or more of adjacent property owners. When a valid protest petition has been submitted, approval of all of a zoning amendment requires a two-thirds majority vote of city council members present and voting. There are 18 adjacent property owners within 150 feet of the subject properties of proposed change. Development Services has received nine petitions that have been certified by the city clerk. This meets the minimum 25% requirement of adjacent property owners to protest for a supermajority two-thirds vote. A two-thirds majority vote of city council members present and voting will be required tonight. Subject properties are located at 1010, 1020, and 1030 Reserve Street between South 8th Street West and South 9th Street West at the intersection of Reserve Street. This is within the Franklin to the Fort neighborhood and City Council Ward 6, northwest of the mall and northeast of Fort Missoula. The Milwaukee Trail is located approximately a half mile to the north of the property and can be accessed by traveling north on the sidewalks along Reserve Street. Here's a closer view of the parcel outlined in red. The three subject properties total to 50,800 square feet in size and contain two primary structures and a few accessory structures on site. One of the primary structures is a detached house, and the appearance of the other primary structure is similar to a detached house and was most recently used as an office. The property is in the developed area of Missoula on Reserve Street and is surrounded by a single detached dwelling units to the north, south, and east, and commercial buildings to the south and west. Duplexes are located on the abutting property to the east of 1030 Reserve Street. The applicable regional plan is the 2035 Our Missoula Growth Policy, which recommends a land use designation of community mixed use. This designation is an area intended for establishments that draw from the community for employee and customer base. They serve the larger community as well as adjacent neighborhoods. A broad range of functions including retail, education, financial institutions, professional and personal services, offices, residences, and general service activities typify this designation. Community mixed use areas are integrated with main transportation corridors such as Reserve Street, including transit and act transportation systems to facilitate efficient travel opportunities. This area accommodates more auto-centric development and vehicular uses. High-density residential development is also encouraged in this area. The city growth policy indicates the C1, C2, and M1R zoning districts are current relatable zoning districts within the community mixed use designation. Two of the zoning districts, C1 and C2, are commercial districts that permit all residential building types. M1R is a limited industrial district that also permits residential, all residential building types. These three zoning districts permit various civic, commercial, and industrial uses, and the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject properties from B3-2 Business Mixed Use with a Design Excellence Overlay to C2-3 Community Commercial with a Design Excellence Overlay. The proposed zoning district is consistent with the growth policy recommendation for the community mixed use land use designation. The current zoning is not consistent with the land use designation. The city growth policy calls for a focused inward approach to encourage infill development in the urban core where infrastructure already exists and promotes mixed-use compact development and enhance connectivity while limiting sprawl and promoting efficient use of existing infrastructure. The proposed C2-3 zoning would increase density and permitted uses in an area with existing infrastructure served by trails, sidewalks, and bike lanes. There is no existing sidewalk along South 8th Street West. South 8th Street West deadends approximately 420 feet east of the subject property and does not provide connection to services or other streets. However, the site can be accessed by two other streets. There are sidewalks on Reserve Street, and there is a curbside sidewalk on South 9th Street West abutting the subject property and directly across the street, but otherwise portion of South 9th Street West does not have sidewalks. Bustups serving mountain line routes 2 and 8 are located within a half mile of the subject property. The parcel is currently served by city fire and police, and the subject property can be served by city water and sewer services. Sewer mains exist adjacent to the subject property, and if redeveloped, the developer will be required to connect to city water by extending a 10-inch water main from the opposite side of Reserve Street. At the time of redevelopment, new structures will be required to connect to city sewer and water. Subject properties are located along one of three commercial corridors in the area, and the C2-3 zoning district allows for more intensive commercial development than the current B3-2 district as called for by the growth policy. Shown here is the current zoning map, the, with the subject property outlined in red is zoned B3-2 Business Mixed Use. The hatch marks designate the Design Excellence Overlay Corridor Typology 4. Parcels to the north and south are also zoned B3-2 with a Design Excellence Overlay. Parcels to the west across Reserve Street are zoned B2-2 with a Design Excellence Overlay, and parcs to the east are zoned RT5.4 Residential. None of the surrounding zoning districts shown on the screen align with the land use designations for the area. B2 and B3 zoning districts do not comply with community mixed use, and RT5.4 does not comply with residential high density. This map shows the subject parcel outlined in red with the proposed C2-3 zone. Design Excellence Overlay Corridor Typology 4 remains. The requested zoning district complies with the growth policy recommendations for the area and permits a broad range of uses within civic, commercial, and limited industrial classifications along an arterial street. Here is a comparison between the existing and proposed zoning districts. Both B3-2 and C2-3 zones allow for similar residential building types, land uses, and property line setbacks. The Design Excellence Overlay requires additional site and building standards. The overlay can be found on Missoula's major commercial corridors and downtown. Both the existing B3-2 zoning district and proposed C2-3 zoning district have a minimum parcel size of 3,000 square feet for single-purpose residential and mixed-use buildings. There is no minimum parcel area for purely commercial or industrial uses. The B3-2 zoning district requires a minimum 2,000 square foot area per dwelling unit, and C2-3 requires a minimum 1,000 square foot area per dwelling unit. With the current B3-2 zoning, the zoning parcel would allow for 25 dwelling units, and under the proposed C2-3 zoning, the zoning parcel would allow for 50 dwelling units. The setbacks are the same for both zoning districts, and the current maximum height is 50 feet. With the proposed rezoning, the maximum permitted height would increase to 65 feet. Both zoning districts allow all residential building types. The uses allowed in the B3-2 zoning district would remain, and the proposed C2-3 zoning district would allow additional civic, commercial, and limited industrial permitted uses provided in Title 20. Some of these uses include building maintenance service, construction, sales and service, eating and drinking establishments tavern, enterprise commercial, medium and large entertainment and spectator sports, hotels and motels, hospital, car wash, limited and general motor vehicle repair, and warehousing, wholesaling, and freight movement. The C2 zoning district allows for more auto-oriented uses than other commercial zoning districts and is most appropriate for lots of abutting major commercial corridors like Reserve Within the city zoning map, there are C2 zoning districts existing adjacent to or near residential districts throughout town. This slide here shows a stretch of South Reserve Street between South Avenue West and Brook Street that is zoned C2 abutting RM2.7 Residential. Other examples were sent to city council last Friday. This area is approximately one mile south from the subject properties, and the land use designation here is community mixed use. On the screen are the three criteria which must be met to constitute spot zoning. The requested zoning district is consistent with the growth policy's land use designation of community mixed use. Therefore, the requested C2 zoning district and its uses are consistent with the area's long-term development plan, which was approved by council. The requested rezoning does not meet criteria one. The proposed commercial zoning is compatible with nearby business and commercial districts along Reserve Street. The landowners of 1010, 1020, and 1030 Reserve Street do not have a special exception. The current B3-2 zoning is not compatible with the land use designation. The rezoned to comply with the growth policy can benefit all landowners in the area and is not limited to just this one landowner. Ideally, over time, the entire area surrounding the parcel would be rezoned to comply with the growth policy. Property owners in the residential area to the east could rezone to a higher-density residential to complement the commercial districts along Reserve Street. The requested rezoning does not meet criteria two or three. For further context on spot zoning, a 2021 Montana Supreme Court case, Hart Thorne versus the City of Whitefish, concludes rezoning is not in the nature of special legislation if it substantially complies with the adopted growth policy. If the rezoning aligns with the adopted growth policy, it fails to satisfy any component of the three-part criteria framework used to identify spot zoning. Again, the requested rezoning does not meet any of the spot zoning criteria. On April 2nd, Planning Board failed to approve a recommendation for the city council to adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property from B3-2 Business Mixed Use with a Design Excellence Overlay to C2-3 Community Commercial with a Design Excellence Overlay. Planning Board recommends city council deny the adoption of an ordinance to rezon. Planning Board concluded that the proposed rezoning fails to satisfy the criteria shown on the screen. During discussion, Planning Board articulated the following points. They highlighted that the increased intensity and density proposed for the subject property are not compatible with the adjacent neighborhood. They expressed concerns that high vehicular intensive uses permitted by the C2 zoning district would not be appropriate in the subject property when considering the surrounding neighborhood. The board noted the vulnerability of more affordable neighborhoods to rezonings and larger development. They emphasized the potential for significant traffic impacts that could affect public health and safety within the neighborhood. The potential of zoning the subject property was flagged as a factor that could alter the value of the buildings in the area. Lastly, the board stated that the character of the area could undergo substantial changes if the subject property were to be rezoned to a C2 district, believing that it does not align with the focused inward principle identified in the growth policy. Additionally, they do not believe that there is adequate access to the site due to a lack of sidewalks on 8th Street, and 8th Street being a dead end. Moving over to the city staff recommendation, despite Planning Board's alternative findings of fact, staff do recommend that city council- of fact, staff do recommend that City Council approve the adoption of an ordinance to rezon the subject property based on compliance with the review criteria and the growth policy as detailed in the staff report. Staff's recommendation is based on the review criteria provided in Title 20 zoning ordinance and recommendations of the growth policy. The proposed rezoning complies with the growth policy and focus inward objectives as the C23 district is a current relatable district of the community mixed-use land use designation. The proposed rezoning does not meet any of the criteria for spot zoning. The subject property can be served by sewer, water, motorized, and non-motorized facilities. The subject property is within a half-mile of bus stops and existing multimodal transportation infrastructure, making the property suitable for an increase in density. The proposed C2 zoning district, C23 zoning district, would allow for additional commercial and industrial uses to serve the larger community as well as adjacent neighborhoods. Future development must comply with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations, which ensures protection of public health, safety, and welfare. This would include a zoning requirement to provide buffering along the entire property line that abuts the parcel zoned or used for residential purposes to mitigate the possible adverse effects such as noise, lighting, or other site-related and operational impacts that can occur when multi-dwelling or non-residential development abuts residential areas. Buffers can be satisfied through three options: a landscape buffer, fence, or wall, or a landscape berm. Since there is no change in setbacks, provision of light and air will be protected. There is a slight increase in maximum building height, however, for development in the existing B32 zoning district and the requested C23 zoning district. It is required that parcels abutting our districts that have a maximum allowed building height of 35 feet or less, the maximum building height at that point of the required minimum setback line is 35 feet. The abutting RT5.4 residential zoning district has a maximum height of 35 feet. The C23 zoning district is compatible with the commercial uses of the neighboring properties and the future land use plan for the area. The rezoning considers the value of buildings and appropriate use of land because it complies with the land use designation and the growth policy and is compatible with adjacent commercial. The rezoning implements the future plan for the area. The zoning amendment would provide for an incremental increase in housing and a broad range of uses within the Missoula urban transportation district. The rezoning is in the best interest of the city because the rezoning implements the recommendations of the 2035 Armazula Growth Policy for areas designated as community mixed use, while increasing allowable density and uses in an area with good access to transportation and services. The existing design excellence overlay for technology four corridors includes design standard, includes design standards for larger scale commercial development that caters to the needs of drivers, but helps to create an environment that softens the visual impact of parking and improve pedestrian experiences. As I mentioned earlier, protest petitions have been received, and a two-thirds majority vote of city council members present in voting is required to approve the rezoning. At this time, staff recommends City Council adopt an ordinance to rezon the subject property located at 1010, 1020, and 1030 Reserve Street. And this concludes staff's presentation. Staff are available for any questions. The applicant is online in case council has any questions for them directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Zoe. We'll go ahead and turn it over to the applicant if there's anything that you wish to present prior to turning it over to council questions.
Hello, my name is Joe Denard. I work at IMEG in Missoula, D-E-H-N-E-R-T. Nothing new to present, just want to thank Zoe again. You know, obviously, I think that this rezon before you guys highlights a number of issues that the city's facing when it comes to growth policy implementation. But I will say it's been great so far to hear the discussion, both at Planning Board, and I'm looking forward to hearing the discussion this evening and helping answer any questions that council may have, especially surrounding the parameters for the decision space, you know, and what the review criteria are here. So, like Zoe said, I'm here for questions if any come up, but really just looking forward to listening, and thank you again, Zoe, for the quality presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Denard. We'll go ahead and turn it over to council questions. Questions from council this evening. Counselor Cheryl, and then Counselor Nugent.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate the presentation. I have a few questions. I'm curious, in that section of reserve, I know we saw right along beside the property what the current zoning was, but is there, like, how far out from that area do you need to go to get to the C2-3 zoning, any properties zoned that in the area?
Are you referring to?
I want to see.
The.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
May I reset the question, please?
My question is, I wanted to see kind of further out on, I mean, are there any other properties on reserve in that general area that have this C2-3 zoning?
Yeah, I can pull that up on Connie J. S., just one second.
And while Zoe's pulling that up, and Cassie Truphard, Planning Supervisor, we will note that that last part of the zoning district, the dash three, does just refer to the height. So what Zoe's likely going to show you is a mix of C2-2 and C2-4. We do not have many C2-3s in town, or any really, with that 65-foot height. Most are 50-foot or 125-foot height.
Okay, so here's the subject property, and we'll go, we'll just go south on Reserve. About a mile is where this C2 zoning starts, from the subject property. So here is where it's at.
The stretch now we're at Brooks.
And then there is one parcel to the north at the intersection of Third and Reserve. That's C2-2 as well.
Mayor, I have another question. My other question was around the B3 zoning. What, I know, I understand what the additional commercial uses would be allowed if we rezoned it to C2, but could you give me, I know we saw this and we've got it in our, we've seen it before, but what commercial uses are available under the current zoning? I'm trying, what I'm trying to get at is kind of the impact on the neighborhood of the change in this.
Yeah, let me pull up the list here. I can share what the new permitted uses would be. That's okay.
In this case, it's the current permitted uses, correct? Is that what you're asking?
That's my question. That's a much more succinct way of asking it.
Yeah, I can show you the table. Great. So, here's the table, B3, and then C2. P is going to be permitted, and C is conditional. If there's a dash, it's not permitted. Let me know if there's a better way that I can go through this.
I can, yes.
So, all the same residential uses are permitted, and so the new commercial uses, I guess just jumping between these two columns here, we have, so some different animal services are currently permitted, conditionally used of building maintenance service. Tavern is currently conditional there, would become permitted outright. Is this kind of how you want to see it? Am I going down the table right, or something else that I can do to help explain this?
No, this is working. I'm just having a hard time. My eyes aren't good enough to see some of that.
Yeah, it's kind of a hard layout. So some different entertainment and spectator sports uses are currently not permitted, so just small venue. C2 would allow for medium and large. There are some financial services that would become permitted. Currently, check cashing and pawn shop are not permitted. Hotel motel, not permitted.
Okay, I think this gives me a good enough idea. This would allow for hotels, a hospital, kind of, I think I have a, I have a, I have a decent idea. Mayor, may I have one more quick question?
You bet. Then we'll move on to the other folks who have their.
Okay, I promise this is, this is my last one for now at least. So, will you explain what, like, how traffic studies come into? I know that that is not something that we're, a traffic study would potentially be triggered during the permitting process. Could you just speak to how that happens?
So there was an initial project review team meeting with engineering, and Public Works and Mobility identified that automated car wash, SS1, would generate an estimated 78 trips per day, which is less than half of the 200 trips per day that would be required for a traffic impact study. So, the proposed use would not require a traffic impact study.
Does that satisfy your question? That's okay. And I think the question is, you know, if you would, Zoe, when is a traffic impact study required of any kind of use? We're at this point of rezon, but if you could just speak to when a traffic impact study is generally required.
So from understanding, so I don't, I'm not familiar with traffic impact studies, but coming from Public Works and Mobility, 200 trips per day is when it would be required.
This is Cassie Truphard again, and that would be at the time of building permit. So it would be, Troy, I think you're here, and correct me if I'm wrong, but prior to building permit approval.
Thank you very much.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thanks, everybody. Appreciate that. Counselor Becerra?
Thanks. I went through the staff report, and maybe I missed it, but I think, Zoe, you mentioned that the current zoning does not meet the growth policy land use designation. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
What is the current land use designation for B3-2?
It's a good question. Let me take a quick look. One second.
I'll have to pull up the growth policy.
It's, this is Joe Denard from IMEG. I'm pretty sure those are in neighborhood mixed use, almost exclusively. I think the Bs are neighborhood mixed use, and you're adjacent to additional zoning that's not growth policy compliant with the RT5.4. I think they're supposed to be at the 24 dwelling units or greater residential high density.
Thanks, Joe. I do believe that's correct. Just didn't want to risk it.
And may I have a follow-up?
Yes.
And the current growth policy recommends community mixed use, which is a little bit higher intensity than the neighborhood mixed use. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
One, if I may, Mayor?
You bet. Go right ahead.
Questions? Under C2-3, that is, I'm sorry, no, the C2-3 is the most intense of the commercial uses, is the most intense of the commercial zoning designations. Is that right?
So the commercial zoning districts are C1, C2, and CBD. The dash refers to the height, the intensity. So the highest C2 would be C2-4.
C2-4, but in terms of the allowed uses, it's, C2 is significantly broader, and more intense uses can be developed in those districts than C1, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then my next question is, under findings of fact, there are some uses, like, say, under C1, a car wash would be a conditional use. Why do we have conditional uses, and what is the criteria that determines whether a conditional use would be permitted?
Yeah, so I can speak to that a bit. Generally, conditional uses, the purpose of that is that a use might be appropriate for an area. However, there are additional considerations specifically based on context. And then I can pull up the review criteria for that. Just share my screen. Maybe. Can y'all see that?
Yes, we can. It's a little small, but thanks for making it bigger.
I'll try. There we go. So, those can be approved when council determines that it's in the interest of public convenience, will not have a significant adverse impact on the neighborhood or community, that it will not impede orderly development of surrounding properties, that it has operating characteristics that are compatible with the area in terms of hours of operation, lighting, noise, and traffic, that it'll not impact traffic safety or comfort for all modes of transportation, that it is in accordance with the growth policy and other adopted plans, that the site design, conditional uses are very specific to a proposed site plan, and that that addresses open space light and protection of natural features, and overall, really, that it's compatible, and City Council has some other items they can look into, such as buffering and screening.
Okay, thank you. So context sensitivity is a huge component of whether we say yes or no to a conditional use approval or denial. Okay, thank you.
You bet. Thanks for your questions. All right, Counselor Nugent.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. What are the compatible uses or compatible zoning designations under the growth policy? It's not just C2, correct?
So related zoning districts for community mixed use are C1, C2, and M1R.
So those are the, those are the three that would be recommended by the growth policy?
Yes.
And just to clarify, Ms. Becerra's line of questioning, in C1 uses such as car washes and taverns would be conditional uses?
A car wash would be conditional. I'll have to check to see if tavern would be conditional on C1. Tavern, yes, would be conditional as well in C1.
Just on a quick scan, and if you missed something, that's fine. What else would be conditional in C1 that's allowed in C2?
Utility, utilities and services major would be conditional. Tavern or nightclub, truck stop or travel plaza, gasoline and fuel sales, casino, car wash, heavy equipment sales and rentals, and residential storage warehouse are all the conditional uses in C1.
And, sorry, I did not ask for continuous follow-ups.
That's all right, we're doing a question bundle.
Good, because I have a couple. Shocking. The casino would still be conditional in C2, though, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there an example of a 65-foot building on Reserve Street or anywhere, something to compare it to?
Hard to think off the top of my head. Let me see if I can just find something close. And might I ask that you speak a little closer to the microphone? I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Oh, no, not you, Cassie, Mike.
Okay.
So, this isn't 65 feet, but it's the best new example I have off the top of my head. If you're familiar with the Trinity Mullen site, those new yellow affordable housing apartments on Broadway, that zoning district has a maximum height of 50 feet, and I believe they reached pretty close to 50 feet. So if you can try to picture maybe 15 feet additional on there. And again, noting what Zoe said about parcels abutting residential districts, at the point of setback, they're stuck at 35 feet, and as they get away from that setback, they can go taller up to the full height of the base zoning district.
Thank you. One last question. One last question for Mr. Subbury?
You bet.
Although I might have follow-ups, so I should have said one last. As councilor, given that there are multiple zoning types that are references compatible in the growth policy, are we required to approve any one of them simply because people asked? Or does council have the discretion to say, "Some of those seem appropriate, some of those don't"? Just got to move to a microphone that'll work. Hold on.
I think this is... Okay. Yeah, I think you're getting at the right point. You're allowed to select any of those and be in compliance with the growth plan. If you want to deny one of the higher-intensity uses, you can deny a higher-intensity use if you make findings that it is not appropriate at this time. So, maybe the growth plan identifies this is a zone that is appropriate eventually in this area, but if you make findings that that level of intensity, given the surrounding development patterns in this area, is not justified at this time based on concerns about noise or traffic volume or safety or any of the kinds of things that are typically associated with these kinds of decision-making calculus, you can do that. And you can say, "Maybe one day, we'll rezone this area to that full intensity, but right now, we think it would be better at one of the lower-intensity relatable zoning districts." So, I think that's justifiable if you make those findings.
Follow-up? Sorry, I got to turn to the mayor and ask for follow-up and turn around and ask Brian a question.
Go right ahead.
So, in a scenario such as this, obviously, the applicant has said what their intended use is, but we're really not supposed to consider their intended use. However, in the C-2-3 or the C-2-2 or all these, there are all kinds of uses that, in theory, could impact a neighborhood. And in our findings of fact, we're allowed to kind of consider any one of those because that could be a use on the property?
Yeah, I mean, I would look at it broadly. So, what are the types of impacts associated with the uses in that level of intensity within that district? And speak to those generally. If you want to use examples from particular kinds of uses that may have similar types of impacts from noise or traffic or safety, that's fine. But zeroing in on one use that we don't want to allow is not probably a great justification for denial of a rezone. But if you're looking at the uses broadly and grouping them together with similar types of adverse effects, then I think that's fine, yeah.
Thanks. Because broadly, if we did C-2-3, any of those uses are allowable without coming back to council or getting conditional uses up to 65 feet tall, assuming they meet the other criteria, correct?
Correct, yep.
Thank you very much.
Great. All right. We'll move on to Counselor Farmer.
Yeah, thanks. Zoe, can you bring up that slide with the spot zoning criteria? I think my brain wasn't processing as fast as you were speaking. And can you just talk about, is it that the staff is recommending that it doesn't meet two of the three criteria? And does it... So, I'm assuming it doesn't need to meet all three to be considered spot zoning? Can you just walk us through that a little bit better so I understand that?
Yes. So... Yeah, so, it doesn't meet any of the criteria. And because it complies with the growth policy, that pretty much will tell you that it doesn't meet any of the criteria. So, the proposed or the requested rezoning does comply with the land use designation and the growth policy. So, therefore, none of this criteria is met.
Can I have a follow-up?
You bet.
So, number one, the proposed use is significantly different from the prevailing use in the area. So, is that... Are we saying that this designation, this zoning is not going to be significantly different than what is already allowed?
So, since the uses within the requested zoning district are... That zoning district, C-2, is... Complies with community mixed use. That complies with the growth policy. So, it basically is setting up for the future use that has been adopted by City Council under the growth policy. So... I guess... Cassie, can you help me out here on this one?
Might I ask Brian to help me out as well?
Yeah. I need to log into the meeting so I can put my hand up. I know I'm behind everybody. So, this is a specific finding related to spot zoning, which is a particular error that City Council could get into with respect to rezone. But it's not the only thing that you're to consider when you're looking at a potential rezone like this. So, a spot zone would be a problem if it met all three of those criteria. But it could still be of a type of use or a category of uses that have levels of intensity that are not compatible in your estimation with the surrounding neighborhood. And therefore, it's not the appropriate time to rezone to this intensity level. So, for example, the growth plan says that we should move this direction, that these are the relatable zoning districts. If the entire surrounding area was already zoned and developed at a C-1 level, and this was moving just one step more to the C-2 level, you may make a finding that now is the time to get a little bit more of an intensity of use classification in this area versus now when the area is still transitioning to more commercial use. And some of the properties surrounding here are commercial, some of them are undeveloped, some of them are residential. So, you can, without finding spot zoning, you could still vote to deny the rezone if you, again, and I mentioned this at the committee meeting or the last meeting we had on this, as long as we lay the foundation for why you think it's an inappropriate zoning designation today.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. Counselor Anderson?
Thanks so much. Zoe, just quickly, I had emailed you a request for that link for the graph that you were showing in response to Ms. Cheryl's question in regards to what the various things that are allowed. If you wouldn't mind sending that, I think all council members, I'm just going to make an assumption, would like to see that as we kind of walk through the designation of like what is permitted/conditional from within the various zonings. I think going off of what Mr. Nugent was asking in regards to height, the C-1 designation, where a car wash would be a conditional use permit, allows for what is the maximum height under that?
Under C-1? So, it depends on the intensity. So, I can show you the table how it varies between C-1, 2, 3, and 4.
Well, Zoe pulls that up. Each zoning district, whether it's C-1 or C-2, has four options for height. And that's where that dash at the end comes from, that dash 3 versus dash 4. So, the uses setbacks, that all stays the same. And then, the height itself will vary.
Okay. That is super helpful, Cassie. I appreciate you. Yes, if you could send this link out to all of us, I think that would be very helpful. Mayor, may I continue?
Certainly.
With my question bundle? So, Ms. Becerra was asking that currently, the growth policy recommends a community mixed use as its recommended zoning for this particular parcel? I just wanted to make sure that I heard and wrote down my notes correctly on that.
And that would be the land use designation, which has three relatable zoning districts.
And within that relatable zoning district, C-2-3 is actually only commercial, not community mixed use?
So, community mixed use, that comes from the growth policy, the bigger future land use map for the city. Within those designations, there are different zoning options, and C-2 is one of the three options in the community mixed use land use designation of that future growth policy map.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. And then, continuing with my bundle here. In reading through the comments from the planning board, there was quite a bit of discussion around traffic in this particular area in regards to the fact that 8th Street is a dead end, and there will not be a stoplight at this particular intersection. How, within staff's recommendation, how do you take into consideration the traffic flow? I realize that you're saying it doesn't necessarily warrant the level of use of the 200 trips per day per... Within, that would trigger a traffic study, but there is still a safety component within the traffic of that particular area, knowing that it is a highly car-centric use of that space. Could you talk a little bit about staff's recommendation in regards to that that is obviously counter to what several people on the planning board brought up?
And I'll invite Troy to add anything if he hears anything. But overall, C-2 is a district you would find primarily along main commercial corridors like Reserve Street. The uses in that... Look for that type of transportation. Additionally, it does have access via sidewalk, bike lane, and vehicular access. While there may or may not be just an entrance to the site from 8th Street, it's unlikely that traffic will go down to the dead end and back as well. But overall, there are three fridges, which is fairly good compared to most parcels and all modes of transportation heading to it.
Mayor, can I interrupt you for a second?
Absolutely.
We lost the MCAT feed. We need to do a 60-second tech reset.
Okay. Well, I'm going to go ahead and recess. Can I recess the meeting right now then? Since we need to do a tech reset, it might be a good opportunity for a bathroom break. We'll come back to council questions. And so, I'm going to go ahead and recess the meeting at 8:07 PM. We'll be back in three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
How's it going? How's it going? What brings you here today?
Okay, I just read through your email from that. I just thought, thinking of the news about the other guy. Does this say somewhere?
My dad calls us.
Yeah, I was just kind of bummed that.
I made a little comment on that story.
Oh, yeah. I'm not on that story.
Yeah, old books.
Oh, thanks. It's a different type of travel.
Thumbs up? All right, folks. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order at 8:13 PM. Thanks very much, everybody, for your understanding. We are back up and running for members of the public watching online and the recording. And so, Counselor Anderson, you were in the middle of questions and want to make sure you had an opportunity to ask all those.
Right. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. My final question is in regards to the definition. In reading through the permitted uses, one of the ones that... There's small venue, medium venue, and large venue. And... They are not permitted... Medium and large venues are not permitted under... Unfortunately, the thing doesn't... Under any of the Bs, but on the Cs, it does. What constitutes a large venue? Or a medium venue, for that matter? And that's my final question. Thank you.
So, the use classifications for entertainment and sports, medium venue includes a capacity of 149... Of more than 149, but fewer than 500. Typically, uses are cinemas, theaters, meeting, or banquet halls. And for a large venue, it's for a capacity of 500 persons or more. Typically, uses are stadiums, large theaters, multiscreen cinemas, and large meeting or banquet halls.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. That looks like all the council questions. I see, hands anybody else online, any other council members wishing to ask questions? All right. Not seeing any additional council questions, then we will go ahead and we will move this to the main motion. Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Happy to put this motion on the floor for debate and conversation. The staff's recommended...
of that building in, in the afternoons. And, and for the people who live to the north, the same sort of thing during most of the day, most of the year, it's gonna be a significant change or would be a significant change in the amount of light that those properties would be able to have access to from the Having seen the, the Mullen Street example, and I gotta say, that place is a nice, or but like, if you, if you put a building that size or that height plus another 15 feet high, everything around there will be dwarfed and in a huge light shadow for a good part of the day. And the property of the, the people who live around there is gonna be significantly reduced as far as its quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Others wishing to provide public comment this evening?
So my name is Reagan Callaway, C A L L A W A Y, and thank you for allowing comments again. I live on 8th Street West, and I am five foot eight. I would like to encourage you guys to consider our vote consistently with what the planning board unanimously disagreed with. It was a unanimous no, and that was based upon some really simple things. Neighborhood safety, and you've heard about 8th Street. 8th Street, you can barely get two cars in and out of 8th Street under Reserve at the same time. There's no way to go anywhere else 'cause it's a dead end. I go out, I turn right, I can't turn left. So, and that depends on the time of the day. And I do it, in terms of statistics, I do it about twice a day, so I have a pretty good replication. It's, it's difficult and dangerous egress and ingress. They also talked about neighborhood disruption, and that is obvious. It's gonna be very disruptive to the neighborhood for all of the reasons stated, and disruptive, disruption of traffic on Reserve Street, a state highway that is one of the most difficult places to drive in general. There's no one in Missoula that would like to see Reserve Street more difficult to drive. And, 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 I mean, look at the, the newspaper article of last week. It's one of the most deadly streets in Montana, if not one of the more deadly streets in the nation, and one of the more, of the three deadly intersections is just five blocks to the north of 8th Street. So the risk here of increasing traffic, and one of the estimates was not 70 cars, but maybe 200 to 300 cars. I don't know. I can't evaluate that, but that was a number that came up week, week before last. One thing, other thing I'd like to note, there is no C2 zoning right now on your map between South and Third on, on, on Reserve. The C2 zoning is below South and then one little tiny bit slightly above Third. Everything else is C1 and, and B zoning. So right now, in terms of consistency, it would not be consistent. And if you took away the growth plan from the criteria, it meets all the three criteria for spot zoning. The only reason it's not spot zoning is because there's a growth plan. So in terms of reality, you know, it's spot zoning. So one last thing, the document that we got with the review criteria said that the city council and the planning board must consider the criteria that actually come from the state, most of them, not all of them. They come from the state. It's, 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 it's a MCA 76-2305. But if you read the criteria that the state has on their website, it says zoning regulations must be designed, not considered. So they must be, they must be included in the process, not just considered.
Thank you, Mr. Callaway. Others wishing to provide public comment this evening?
Come on up.
Hi. My name is Aiden Axelson Rodriguez. That's A X E L S O N hyphen R O D R I G U E Z. I've been at 2418 South 9th Street West for 11 years with my family, and we are about half a block away from the proposed rezoning. The potential residential traffic increase would double for the rezoning, allowing more than twice the amount of dwellings, and the non-residential traffic would be exponentially increased with a large business. And to describe what non-residential traffic looks like in our neighborhood, it is people trying to avoid Highway 93 on Reserve Street and driving well over the speed limits and recklessly and getting frustrated when they realize that our neighborhood has streets that end abruptly in every direction, and it's a safety hazard. We have no sidewalks in our neighborhood, and families and seniors walk around in the street and are already put at danger from non-residential traffic. People think they can come through and make a quick exit, and it increases all of our danger. Just yesterday, my wife and I were moving our cars around, and someone who clearly does not live in our neighborhood about hit me right in front of my house and flipped me off when I was walking along the street in front of my own home. Rezoning so that larger businesses can take over part of our block will increase those dangers, and I understand that the city council cannot take into consideration what will be there, but my family does not have the luxury of ignoring the reality of what will happen there if the rezoning goes through. We're gonna have to live there with that reality no matter what, whether it's 50-some dwellings on that little lot or some large equipment sales company or a monstrosity of a car wash that ends up being there, it's going to make our neighborhood less safe. The current zoning already allows for new dwellings and for new businesses, and we're not opposed to growth and change. We're just worried about what we're growing and changing into. I guess Missoula's always been a place that supports community, and it's always been a place that I wanted to raise a family, and I think we're just scared that we're gonna be changing into a place that is, let's see, what did I, I'm sorry. I'm reading because it's hard to keep my thoughts straight in front of people.
You're doing great.
But we're opposed to changing to a town that squashes family neighborhoods in favor of someone's potential profit. So me and my family are asking that we vote for safety and against the rezoning. So thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Axelson Rodriguez. All right. Other public comment? Come on up.
Hi, everyone. My name's Tara Jensen. I live, J E N S E N, I live on 9th Street, so I'm definitely in the area. I'm within the 150. I think you've heard a lot. We've tried to be really active and tried to inform you all as much as we could about kind of the concept of rezoning versus the reality of what will happen to our neighborhood. I, I don't wanna reiterate what people have already said, but a couple of things that haven't been highlighted today is we just had a low-income housing unit put at the end of 9th. Like, I think it's 40 units. I'm not really sure. Those individuals walk around all day long. Gordon does four to five laps, I think maybe six laps a day. A lot of them are, need mobility assistance. They have canes, they have walkers, they have wheelchairs. People who are not from the neighborhood are not gonna know. They're not gonna know that 9th is two blocks long, that Clark is two blocks long, that 10th is two blocks, like, it's a bunch of dead ends, and we watch people already kind of come through there, driving unsafely, and someone is going to get hurt. The other thing with living in the neighborhood is I know how to turn off of Reserve onto 9th. I do it all the time. I know when I need to slow down. I know that when freezing and, you know, thawing happens, that it pulls down to the end, and I gotta take a wider turn. I know it every time. And other people aren't gonna know it. Even if they're not coming all the way down into 9th, turning off, there are gonna be car accidents. People turning off of 8th, if people are going through that way, people are gonna turn off, and they're gonna hit traffic. It's gonna be Reserve Street, 40 to 50 miles an hour traffic. It's gonna be a danger. The last thing I wanna bring up is with the low-income senior housing that's the end of the street, that is now pretty high traffic for emergency vehicles. I mean, it's noticeably different, and anything that's like blocking off 9th, even if it's two cars, that's blocked off, like, two cars waiting to turn into something is that street's blocked off, and now emergency vehicles aren't gonna get to the people who need help. And also, a lot of people in our neighborhood are, are aging. We just have, you know, ambulances. People get sick, people get hurt, and, you know, emergency vehicles need to get down there. Same thing with 8th. If there's two cars there, they're not getting down 8th to the, the group home or to the seniors that live down there. There's just serious traffic issues here. People are going to get hurt. So I hope you'll just recognize that now is not the time for this level of zoning in this area. It's too intense. And on top of it, if you can't find a way for a no on the C2, do the C1, be involved, protect our neighborhood. The condition use, the conditional use permit process will be really important to protecting us and the people who live here and the people who just wanna work, walk on our lacking of sidewalks and streetlights in our little tiny neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Jensen. Are there other public comments in the room this evening?
Good evening. Matt Etheridge, E T H R I D G E. Almost forgot how to spell my name. I am very soon going to be marrying one of the owners on 9th of one of the duplexes right there. I have a 10-year-old child, and we do like to go on our walks down to Franklin and then shoot the ball, play on the equipment, do a lap, whatever. We also take our three dogs down there. Getting to Franklin and even around, there's very few stop signs between 9th and Eaton on four-way intersections and T-intersections. In fact, the only stop signs between Eaton and Reserve are Eaton and Reserve. So adding more traffic in that area, seeing how we have 8th and 9th that end relatively in dead ends after a few blocks with only two other streets to egress out of that 9th Street area, there's gonna be an increase, and I don't want to be walking my dog or having my kid on a bicycle or rollerblades going to Franklin, and then someone whips around one of those corners and smacks because there's already limited visibility due to car presence and certain homes having seven cars that are lining both sides of the streets, and you can barely fit a car, a truck and a half down those roads. So like, safety, we have those, the elderly people as well, that's been mentioned several times. I'll try not to repeat too many things. And I know for a fact that there's gonna be people that wanna turn left off of 9th and 8th onto Reserve, and that's a nightmare. And I know for a fact, I coach at Big Sky High School for freshman football. I go all the way down to South using Eaton just to go to Big Sky so that I don't have to turn left onto Reserve because 8:30, 8, well, actually, 7 till like 9:30 is just stopped at traffic in the morning sometimes, going in between that section from 3rd and 9th, and it's, it's a pain, and you're gonna have people that wanna do it, and we already have enough accidents with a streetlight. So I'm just, all I'm saying, I guess, really is it's a little early for this kind of development without looking into a lot of safety concerns, I guess. I don't know. I'm just spouting things, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Etheridge. Others in the room?
Hi, I'm, my name is Steve Soper, S O P E R, and I live on 8th Street, and it's, I see you guys know that it is a one-way, or not a one-way, but a dead end, very tight and not much room to maneuver, and I just feel that this upgrade in zoning is bad for our neighborhood, it will devalue it. You know, the traffic flows are tough already, and it's gonna make them worse, and so I would just encourage you guys to listen to what people have said and consider that as a no-go. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Soper. Other folks wishing to make public comment in the room tonight? All right. Not seeing anybody in the room, I'll just shift to online to see if there's anybody online that wishes to make public comment on this agenda item. Not seeing any hands raised. I'll just give it a second here. Not seeing any hands raised. Okay. All right. Then that will go ahead and conclude public comment and the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to city council for city council deliberation. That includes questions and comments. So Counselor Jordan, you had your hand up, but I see it went down. Are you ready for, all right? We're ready for ya.
I don't know why it went down, but thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, I just want to refer to my notes because I too lose my train of thought when I don't write things down and read from my notes, so I, I hear ya. I just wanted to thank all the folks who've come out tonight from Ward 6 to talk about our neighborhood. I don't know if you know, but I'm one of your representatives, and I care about our neighborhood a lot, and I appreciate the tact and the open-mindedness that you folks have had to this development. You all repeated that you're not opposed to development, but perhaps considering the context of neighborhoods is really important when we consider rezones. Today, I will be voting no on this, and the reasons why are many, but primarily include the following. This rezon does not promote public health and safety. The rezon will increase traffic, noise, chemical smells, artificial light pollution, and lack of natural light from buildings regardless of buffering for potential commercial development within this rezon classification. I'm currently working with multiple neighbors who sit within one block of Reserve, who've had their quality of life severely affected by some of the noisier or traffic-inducing or smell-producing or light-polluting businesses just across Clark Street. The rezon does not protect neighbors from potential toxic uses allowed within the new classification, and I have tremendous empathy for the neighbor at 2432 South 9th Street West whose front door sits within 18 feet of the property line. This rezon does not add value to the neighborhood. It will negatively, negatively affect property values through reduction of quality of life. Ward 6, which this re, this, excuse me, this proposed rezon sits within and is the ward I was elected to represent, is losing its character through zoning like this and other uses currently allowed.
Hi, my name is Steve Soper, S O P E R, and I live on H Street. And it's, obviously you guys know that it is a one-way, or not a one-way, but a dead end, very tight and not much room to maneuver. And I just feel that this upgrade in zoning is bad for our neighborhood, it will devalue it. You know, the traffic flows are tough already and it's going to make them worse. And so I would just encourage you guys to listen to what people have said and consider that as a no-go. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Soper. Other folks wishing to make public comment in the room tonight? All right, not seeing anybody in the room, I'll just shift to online to see if there's anybody online that wishes to make public comment on this agenda item. Not seeing any hands raised, I'll just give it a second here. Not seeing any hands raised. Okay. All right, then that will go ahead and conclude public comment and the public hearing and we'll bring it back to City Council for City Council deliberation. That includes questions and comments. So, Councilor Jordan, you had your hand up, but I see it went down. Are you ready for, all right, we're ready for you.
I don't know why it went down, but thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, I just want to refer to my notes because I too lose my train of thought when I don't write things down and read from my notes, so I hear you. I just wanted to thank all the folks who've come out tonight from Ward Six to talk about our neighborhood. I don't know if you know, but I'm one of your representatives and I care about our neighborhood a lot. And I appreciate the tact and the open-mindedness that you folks have had to this development. You all repeated that you're not opposed to development, but perhaps considering the context of neighborhoods is really important when we consider rezones. Today, I will be voting no on this and the reasons why are many, but primarily include the following. This rezone does not promote public health and safety. The rezone will increase traffic, noise, chemical smells, artificial light pollution, and lack of natural light from buildings regardless of buffering for potential commercial development within this rezoned classification. I'm currently working with multiple neighbors who sit within one block of Reserve, who've had their quality of life severely affected by some of the noisier or traffic-inducing or smell-producing or light-polluting businesses just across Clark Street. The rezone does not protect neighbors from potential toxic uses allowed within the new classification, and I have tremendous empathy for the neighbor at 2432 South Ninth Street West whose front door sits within 18 feet of the property line. This rezone does not add value to the neighborhood, it will negatively affect property values through reduction of quality of life. Ward Six, which this proposed rezone sits within and is the ward I was elected to represent, is losing its character through zoning like this and other uses currently allowed. Today, on a walk, I stopped and stood at the corner of Sixth and Grant Street, and from that perspective, I could see three large apartment complexes going in that will eventually provide more than 50 units within two blocks. That's at least 50 cars, that's at least 100 people. Ward Six lost blocks of homes to the new ward boundary relocation last year that provide character and identity to the Franklin of Fort and River Road neighborhoods. I spend a lot of my time assisting neighbors who live in that one block just off Reserve, trying to ensure that they have peaceable enjoyment of their homes from businesses that are not compatible with the neighborhood. The neighbors around this lot are not opposed to commercial development and they've accepted the current zoning and its potential uses when they purchased or began renting their property nearby. And I just want to end with, just because something's legal doesn't mean it's ethical. And those are the reasons why I'll be voting no tonight.
Thank you, Councilor Jordan, and Councilor Vazika.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions that came up during the public comment process. I was wondering, because I frequent Ninth and Eighth Street and Seventh Street, and I was wondering, are there any signs that are noting that there is no outlet on Ninth and Eighth? I'm assuming not, because I haven't seen any.
Good question. Troy, are you aware of any no-outlet signs on, you said Eighth or Ninth?
This is Troy Monroe, City Engineer for Development Review. So Ninth Street does have outlets, right?
It has one outlet, yes.
Yeah, so that one would not have any. Eighth Street, it should have one there. Eighth Street is basically a super driveway for those four homes. So it probably most definitely does. And in relationship, just because it hasn't been brought up, there will be, no matter what goes in at that location, sidewalks will be put in on Eighth Street. There's not enough right-of-way, those sidewalks will be put on a sidewalk easement onto the parcel. So just so everyone's aware that there will be, any development that occurs will have the responsibility to put in sidewalks where there aren't any currently.
Okay, and I guess, all right, now I'm just kind of spitballing here. Are there any type of signage that allows for, yes, there is one outlet, but not recommended?
No, we don't have any type of those types of signs.
Okay.
Usually, those can be handled by maybe doing traffic calming by bobbing out intersections or stuff like that. People will find a way to zigzag through neighborhoods, unfortunately, but yeah.
Okay, I appreciate your responses. And there was another public commenter that noticed that there are no stop signs in the highly frequented areas. I guess, is there any way that we can look into that? Or I guess this is just me putting that into the notification stage where I would like that to be looked into?
Yes, and, you know, stop signs do come up, they get to the transportation safety team. Our actual Public Works manual says that we don't put in stop signs unless they're needed. Too frequent of stop signs where they're not needed, just wrecks with the overall traffic stuff. But where there are volumes or accidents that would warrant a stop sign, they are most definitely added in town. So if you know of specific locations, we can bring that to the traffic safety team.
I appreciate that answer and I actually do agree with that because sometimes there are stop signs where they're not needed. So I guess now I'm going to go into my comment, if that's allowed, Madam Mayor.
Certainly.
I do understand the very, the legitimate concerns about having a, having a more intense business in that area. But this is Reserve Street and Reserve Street is a, it's a main thoroughfare, it is one of the main highways in our town. And there is a similar location that is south of Taco John's and they have the similar neighborhood, although they do have more egress and ingress areas. But I cannot come up with a legitimate reason to say no, except for people that I really like are really against this. And I, and it hurts, you know, I feel you, but I also am a huge private property rights person. So I'm uncomfortable with this vote, but I will be in favor with it. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilor Vazika. Councilor Sheryl?
Yeah, thanks. And I think all of us have really been thinking about this and looking at maps of the area and, you know, driving in the area, those of us that are not familiar with it. I think where I've come to on this, and I appreciate all the staff's work and I appreciate people coming out to comment, I think that the zoning that's being requested, and we don't get to just say, hey, why don't you request this other zoning, they request what they request and we say yes or no to that, so we can't just change it. I think the zoning that has been requested, the list of possibility, possible uses of that property just opens up real public safety concerns for me, for the neighborhood as it is right now with the network of streets there. That is a strange network of streets, by the way. I don't live in that area, but it's confusing. You know, I don't think that, I just don't think it's compatible with where the neighborhood is right now with this level of intensity of use. I'm worried about, I'm worried about the traffic, I'm worried about the safety for the neighborhood. I just, I, I'm not going to be supporting this rezone tonight because I do think that it's going to have a massive impact on the neighborhood and I have real safety concerns.
Thank you, Councilor Sheryl and Councilor Nugent.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I will also not be supporting this rezone tonight. I want to state on the record why. I certainly recognize and have voted several times for rezones, you know, Missoula's growing and changing and there are a lot of times where tough decisions have to be made. I don't necessarily see this falling in the same category. I think the allowed uses outlined in the C2 zoning feel to be a significant change for this portion of Reserve Street when considering the zoning is not even the full block but will border residential halfway through the block. I think that creates significant impacts, no matter the use, because there are several uses outlined in the C2 allowable uses. Along such broad uses on those half-blocks of reserves, not bordering intersections that have traffic controls also feels like we're inviting increased commercial traffic into the neighborhoods, which creates a problem in my mind. No C2 zoning is in the immediate area, the closest appears to be about four blocks away, but that, again, that's located at intersection with a stoplight, so even then I don't find that comparison to be exact. But maybe most concerning, the height of the building allowed in C2-3 are drastically different from most of what is found on Reserve Street. And given that this area is currently not zoned for this high-impact commercial, even if the growth policy allows for a broad array of options for council to consider, this seems like too significant of a change that would feel out of place with the immediate area. So for those reasons, I'm willing to vote no tonight.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Nugent, and moving to Councilor Becerra.
I did do quite a bit of research on this and I read the staff report several times, actually, and drove in the neighborhood just to get a better feel for this. You know, it's interesting because while I appreciate the disclosure of what the intended use is going to be if this rezone is allowed, it kind of muddies the waters a little bit to know what the intent use is. And I think, when I think about the use, I think about the fact that the current zoning has, would not allow it, or any of the other zoning districts, it would be a conditional use, in which case this body would have a different role and one that would allow us to look at the neighborhood, look at the use in a more context-sensitive manner. But, you know, setting aside whatever the use is, what we're charged with today is to look at whether the rezone would make sense. And I have to say that, you know, while the current growth policy calls for a broader range of uses in this area, the lack of infrastructure to support any of the allowed uses under the requested zoning is significant for me. You know, I believe that the rezone does not substantially meet the rezoning criteria under the conclusions of law. I don't know how much detail I should provide for this, but given that this is a legal matter, maybe I will go a little bit into detail. You know, under conclusions of law, Section 1A subsection, or, you know, the statements 1, 2, and 3 for me, it doesn't comply substantially with the growth policy in that the criteria says whether the zoning is made in accordance with the growth policy, and it is, but accordance with the growth policy doesn't necessarily mean that it's the appropriate level of intensity for this area. If we move to Section 2, whether the zoning is designed to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, under number 1, the subject property can be served by sewer and water, yes, motorized and non-motorized facilities, I would argue that half a mile, that is 12 blocks more or less. Best practices around transit and what people are willing to walk is usually a quarter of a mile. So this is not that it's, you know, right there you have a bust-up. Number 4, the zoning is designed to facilitate adequate provision of transportation, I don't believe that the rezone would do that. Number 3, whether the zoning considers the promotion of compatible urban growth, I would argue that the current zoning district does just that. We keep talking about focus inward, but it's, the current zoning does that. So I don't think there's a need for a rezone in order to meet that goal of the growth policy. Number 4, consider whether the zoning is designed to promote public health, public safety, and the general welfare, whether the zoning is designed to secure safety from fire and other dangers, whether the zoning considers the reasonable provision of adequate light and air, and whether the zoning conserves the value of buildings and encourages the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdiction. I think it's debatable. I think it really depends on what ends up being developed on that property. And that, you know, under C2-3, that is a really broad range of possibilities, all of them, in my opinion, would not necessarily facilitate safety or promote safety. Reserve Street is one of the, if not the most unsafe U.S. highway corridor in the state and we're lucky that we got some grant funding to do a safety study along the entire corridor. So I think it would be good for us to know what that reveals before we continue to make Reserve Street a barrier for, particularly for pedestrian crossings moving east-west in our communities. So, you know, we also referenced the Reserve Street corridor plan, that is a plan from 1995. Back then, I think, for whatever reason, we were thinking we needed to encourage some of these broader-range uses along Reserve Street, but a lot has changed in almost 30 years now. So I don't feel comfortable that this is the appropriate level of intensity of uses for this particular area, and for all those reasons, I will not be supporting it.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Becerra and Councilor Anderson.
Okay, well, I just want to, like, ditto everything that Ms. Becerra just said. And I appreciate her very well-laid-out arguments and I want to echo those sentiments. I, you know, I want to thank staff for the hard work that they put into this. The amount of work that goes on behind the scenes for it to finally get to the point where we're having this discussion in a public space is many numerous hours and we rely on them and their expertise and they're looking at everything and, for the most part, usually agree with them. I will say that in this particular case, I will be with most of my colleagues who have pointed out tonight, not in support of this because I do have really serious concerns about the health and safety of this potential rezone, even though what, we cannot take into consideration what the applicant is proposing as a factor. We have to say the rezone can be one of many things. And I think in this particular situation, that, as Ms. Sheryl pointed out, is too many things possible under this particular rezone for that particular parcel, given, you know, its close proximity to neighborhoods, the lack of overall infrastructure. I mean, obviously, I'm sure Eighth Street would love to get sidewalks about this, but the flip side to that is, you know, the zoning, once we make it, it goes with that property and at some point in time, for some reason, if this proposed project doesn't go through, that zoning can't be redone, undone. And I think that that's something that we all really take seriously when looking at rezones because once you, you know, it is hard to claw back and it's really hard once things are built, you know, they're permanent. So I am not comfortable with the level of, you know, options available under this particular zoning. I do not think that they go well with the infrastructure that is currently in place and, in my mind, the health and safety aspects outweigh the, you know, possible upsides for rezoning this particular property. So I will not be in support of the rezone request.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Anderson and Councilor Farmer.
Yeah, thank you. Thank, I just want to say thank you for everyone that came down and commented and helping us understand the neighborhood a little bit better. And thank you for staff for that really good presentation. I agree with a lot of what my colleagues have already said and because I also don't feel ready to vote yes on this rezone, I just wanted to repeat some of the reasons. I do drive this stretch every day, back and forth to work, and it is a known, a very well-known terrible spot on Reserve Street. Traffic gets backed up significantly and we already know of some pretty bad accidents that have happened in that area. So I'm not convinced at this point that it will benefit the city in terms of public health and safety. I really think that eventually we're going to see the C2-3 zoning eventually come along Reserve Street to match the growth policy, but I just don't think at this time and at that spot is the right place for it to happen. And to me, it just really doesn't meet the city's needs as a whole and for all those reasons, I also will not be voting yes.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Farmer and Councilor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, in my mind, on one hand, I appreciate the comments of Councilperson Vazika. I too, you know, think, I place a lot of effort in some private property rights for a person to be able to do what they want with a particular piece of property. But the caveat there for me is in conjunction with, you know, what effect it has in terms of public health and safety for neighbors in a particular area. And in weighing private property rights, you know, to me, it's a question of expectation and it's a question of degree in my mind. Certainly, you buy a piece of property in this town, you know, wherever the current zoning is in that particular piece of property, my expectation is I could do, I would be able to do whatever I want within that particular zone on that piece of property as I have purchased it, wherever zone it happens to be at that given time. In my mind, that's not a debate, there's no question with that. It is what it is. But if we're going to go down a road of changing land use or changing zoning, then it's a question of degree. And to me, you know, it seems like we've had a good conversation here tonight about, you know, the request, which is C2 zoning as opposed to, you know, some other possibilities. I know it discussed C1, but the overarching consideration in my mind has to do with the traffic aspect of this particular zone that's being requested, the C2 zone. You know, I just think of my own experience with other car washes in town here. I won't name any, but, you know, I've used one off and on West Broadway near McDonald's, you know, real quick to get off Broadway to get into the thing. But then I find myself using the side street Liberty Lane to go out to Russell and get out that way. Near my house, there's a car wash down there off South Brooks. Near a couple banks going off Brooks, no big deal. When I get out of there, I take the back streets. I go 34th, I go Schilling, I go 36th, I come in on Door and weave my way through. And, you know, another car wash down South Brooks closer to Walmart, use that coming in again, no big deal getting in off the major street. But time and time again, I find myself, you know, in that particular case, coming out on Old Highway 93, then shooting back to Reserve so I can make that turn to go south on Reserve. So it just, I look at this, I see that same sort of thing playing out with, you know, it may or may not be an issue getting into a commercial C2 type development, whichever, you know, would develop within that property, be it a car wash or be it any other thing that would be permitted in a C2 zone. But the business is getting out, and I just can't help but see, you know, a utilization of particularly 9th Street, and I'm looking at Google Maps, you know, to Margaret, over to Eaton, down to Eaton, down to 14th, that's a four-way stop, that's going to congest that, come out back on Reserve that way, or maybe they take Eaton Street across to Kemp. And I couldn't help notice while we were delivering here tonight, I was just curious in terms of traffic impacts. You know, the school bus system that we have in town here. So I pulled up Missoula County Public Schools and the Beach Transportation Public School system, the routes. And there is a stop in the area of 10th and Kemp that arrives out there approximately 3:00 PM in the afternoon. That's a busy part of the day. So I can't help but wonder to what extent, I think in my mind, you know, how wide that street is, and it's not very wide, Kemp's not very wide, it's a collective street, and certainly 10th isn't certainly any wider than Kemp. And, you know, kids getting off the bus and their safety. And again, this idea of people using these back streets to pull out of, you know, that commercial development there, in my mind, that's just a hurdle I can't overcome to be in support of this particular zoning request. So as such, I too will be voting against. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Campbell. And Councilor Vazika, I see that you have another comment, or maybe it's a question?
Just real quick, I just wanted to let everybody know that I am not making this decision without knowledge of the area. I am very familiar with this area. My folks live in the Target Range area. I live by West Side Lanes, and so I'm very familiar with this area. I travel over there a lot. And I am a big advocate for private property rights, like my colleague just mentioned. And usually, Mr. Campbell and I agree on things, and this seems to be one of those things that we differ on. And I really respect all of my other colleagues' decisions on this, but I just wanted to be on record that I am very aware of the decision that I'm making. And I, and I know it's not popular, but I do stand by it.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Vazika. And seeing that that is all of our comments from council, we'll go ahead and we will wrap up our parliamentary debate and turn it over for a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble.
All right. Voting on item 5.4, an ordinance to rezon 1010, 1020, and 1030 Reserve Street. We do need a two-thirds vote in order to pass, and we will begin with Carlinno. Farmer?
No.
Jordan?
No.
Nugent?
No.
Savage?
No.
Sheryl?
No.
Vazika?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Becerra?
No.
And Campbell?
No.
And that is one in favor, nine opposed, and the item does not pass.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I want to thank members of the public for coming down and providing thoughtful comments as well as the thoughtful questions and comments from council. And I want to thank the staff for your hard work as well. Thanks, everybody. We already have taken a break, so we're going to continue on on the agenda. That wraps up all of our public hearings this evening. We just have a few other items. I knew we do have folks here for public comment on items not on the agenda, but we're going to continue on on items that are on the agenda. So we'll move on to items that are new business. And I'm going to go ahead and hand over the presentation of new business to City Clerk, Clerk Trimble.
Yes. Hi, thanks, everyone. This is your new City Clerk, Clerk Trimble, and I have two items that we've added to the agenda under new business that I just wanted to speak to how they, how they ended up here and what the, what we'll be asking of you today. So through just a small miscommunication due to some staff that are covering for other people, and this was not a normal part of their job, we did have two items that are under new business that would have normally fallen on the consent agenda. And they did not make it onto the agenda on Friday, and so they were not published with our normal publication that goes on the website on Friday and the notice that goes out to people who follow the city council agenda. But I discussed this with Attorney Ryan Settler, and we came to the conclusion that because the purpose of these two items is actually to set a public hearing into the future, it was a good idea to continue to hold these items tonight because it matches with the spirit of the notice law, where we are giving the most possible notice for a future public hearing so that the public can engage with these two items. So item 6.1 is actually a, an item that is, we're required to hold a hearing, but this council has no vote on. You are all familiar with those who've done them in the past. And then item 6.2 is something that the council will be voting on at a future date, but we are asking today that we set a public hearing for May 13th. And on both of these items, legal ads have already been published. And so to decrease confusion and allow the public their opportunity to hear with as much as soon as possible, we didn't want to move these to a later time. We wanted to actually get the word out starting today and keep the items on track the way they are with the legal ads that have already been published. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them, but these two items would have been on the consent agenda for your consideration this evening, but for a small staff mix-up, and we're just rectifying it by adding some, shining a light on them and putting them in the new business so everyone's aware that they are on the agenda and we're going to be voting on them today.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. Are there any council questions? Okay, not seeing any. Then I am wondering, I think these are two distinct motions, they are two different dates that they would be heard. So I am going to look to Council President Sheryl to see if you would entertain making the motion for each, unless...
Well, I would, I would think that there are land use items, at least the second one is for sure. I mean, the other one is, I guess, but it's also just that it's something we have to do legally, so.
Right.
How about I make the first one and Mike makes the second?
That's perfect.
Or I'll just keep making them. I recommend that we suspend Council Rule 13, requiring items to be published on the agenda Friday to be considered, and set a public hearing on May 6, 2024, to hold a public forum on an application from the University of Montana to vary from Title 20 zoning code requirements regarding construction of a new residence hall.
All right. Motion's on the floor. Is there any public comment on item 6.1 this evening? Not seeing any in the room? How about online? All right. Not seeing any online, then we'll bring it back to council questions or comments. Oh, I see a hand up here. Oh, Mr. Larson, go ahead. I don't know if you had your hand up when I was looking. Why don't you go ahead and unmute for public comment?
I was just curious why we can't update the online agenda to reflect any changes that are, that are made. Just for everyone else to follow along, it just seems very confusing. It's, it's like, it's like only if you showed up at this certain place at a certain time are you privy to this change. And nobody following along on the live stream is allowed to see this, this agenda item now. It just seems kind of funky.
Mr. Larson, if you're able to access the internet and you visit the city council, city council agenda's website, where our city council agendas are always posted, this updated city council agenda is online and is available for all the public to see. So perhaps you might need to refresh your browser. Okay. Thank you for your comment, Mr. Larson. So back to questions or comments from council? Not seeing any. All right. Then we'll go ahead and move to a roll call vote on setting this public hearing. Ms. Trimble, please.
Beginning with item 6.1, setting a public hearing for the University of Montana to vary Title 20 zoning code, setting a public hearing for May 6th, beginning with Farmer.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Sheryl?
Yes.
Vazika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
And Carlinno?
Yes.
And that is 10 in favor, none opposed.
All right. Great. Thank you. There's been a staff presentation on both of these items, and so I'll look to Councilor Nugent to make the recommended motion for 6.2.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Move City Council to suspend Council Rule 13, requiring items to be published on the agenda Friday to be considered, and adopt a resolution of intention to amend the city boundary to exclude and remove from the corporate limits of the city of Missoula and discontinue city zoning for certain tracts of land known as Tracts 2 and 3 of Certificate Survey Number 5850 and adjacent Deer Creek Road right-of-way, as shown in Exhibit A. Set a public hearing for May 13th, 2024, and refer this item to the Land Use and Planning Committee for May 8th, 2024, based on the findings of fact in the staff report.
Great. Thank you very much. Motion is on the floor, and so we'll open it up to public comment for folks in the room. Anybody in the room wish to make a public comment? Okay, not seeing any. Online, Mr. Larson?
I'm sorry, I still have my hand raised. I didn't mean to comment.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Larson. All right. That concludes public comment on this item. Any additional council comments? Not seeing any? Then we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble.
Okay. New business item 6.2, asking to set a public hearing on May 13th for the, to discontinue city zoning for the parcel described, beginning with Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Sheryl?
Yes.
Vazika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlinno?
Yes.
And Farmer?
Yes.
And that's 10 in favor, none opposed.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. That item passes. Now we'll move on to consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda, and then we'll invite community comment on these items before we vote. There's only four items this evening, and so, Ms. Trimble, if you'll go ahead and post those on the screen and then read those aloud, please.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have a motion to approve accounts payable or claims for checks dated April 23rd, 2024, in the amount of $935,274.79. The next motion is to authorize the purchase of a 2023 CB7 asphalt compactor, Western States Cat, for a 2023 Caterpillar CB7 asphalt compactor with trade-in of a currently owned 2018 Cat CB64B asphalt roller. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign Amendment 3 to the Lower Millard Creek Professional Services Agreement with WGM Group, Inc., for the additional scope of service at a cost not to exceed $105,572.45. And finally, a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Suzanne Peterson to the Police Commission for a term beginning May 1st, 2024, expiring on April 30th, 2027.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any council members that wishes to separate a consent agenda item? Okay, not seeing any. Then we'll go ahead and take public comment on items on the consent agenda. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Don't see any in the room? How about online? Mr. Larson?
Yeah, the Missoula Police Department is yet again buying another almost $3,000 worth of ammunition. That's all well and fine. Some of these officers are supposed to be supplying their own ammunition when they have self-supplied AR-15s. They are not doing that, I believe, currently. And the police will not give a list or any sort of total number of officers that have self-supplied AR-15s and should be doing this. So we're essentially giving away free ammo to these guys, but that's all cool. They're cops, they deserve it, right? So, and they also got an $1,800 ladder this week, which is pretty cool. I'm also wondering about the, the cat that we're buying, the big piece of heavy machinery, just wondering if it's actually been paid off, the old one that is, before we buy a new one? Wondering if that's a piece of equipment that we actually own currently, or if we're still paying for that one and we're about to sell it off and buy a new one that's exactly only a number of years younger than this one that we currently own. So just wondering if that's a wise purchase and wondering if it's wise to compete with, you know, the various different construction oligarchies in town, as opposed to just getting them to bid on these projects. But just, just questioning to try and like tighten the belt of the city and not spend as much money here. But yeah, it would be nice to know how many of the officers have self-supplied weapons and should be supplying their own bullets, but that only comes up every once in a while. So it's good to have them shoot accurately, but they should be following their own collective bargaining agreement, which it states clearly in that they should supply their own bullets if they have supplied their own gun.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Larson. Are there other folks online that wish to speak on the consent agenda? All right. Not seeing any? Then we'll go ahead and do a voice vote on the consent agenda. Ms. Trimble.
All right. Voting on the four items on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Hearing none opposed, that passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to regular business, and we do have an item under 9.1(c), which is committee of the whole committee report. And this is 9.1(c)(b), appointment of city council member to the Missoula Redevelopment Agency Board. So we've got a number of folks on here, and I am going to turn to President Sheryl for this presentation.
Great. So we have, as, as many of you know, we have a number of board designations that as city councillors we serve on. We have five formal board designations currently. The Health Board, MCAT Community Forum, the Transportation Policy Coordinating Committee, and the Local Emergency Planning Board. The refers to this, which I think we have all of us on here this time, I think Stacy was on it as well. There's been a little confusion with that. But this referral would be adding a council member as an ex officio to the Missoula Redevelopment Board, and it would be considered a formal board designation. to the Missoula Redevelopment Board, and it would be considered a formal board designation just like those other things. There are many informal board designations that council doesn't vote on, the council president just says, "Well, you serve on this board," and most of the time people say yes, not all the time. But, so I have asked, so this comes, as many of you remember, when I was elected council president, or when the president brings these formal board designations forward, they bring a name along with them. So in keeping with that process and in looking at this as one of those formal board designations that will go forward with the next council president, and they will put their name out there, or put the names out there for that, I have asked Mike to serve in this position. He kindly said that he would accept that nomination. I feel that Mike understands land use, no offense to anyone, but I think he understands land use probably better than anyone on council, and that is why he's our, he is our land use chair. He has spent his time testifying in Helena a number of times on MRA issues, so he understands them quite well. He also understands how the work of Tiff and our community can serve for the greater good, which is why I've asked him. This will be a position that he will be, the successful candidate will participate in board discussions. They will not be a voting member, but I, for one, am really excited to have brought this referral forward because I think that this will give council a better tie with the MRA and with our new system of report outs that we do each month on work that we're doing in the community and all of these board designations and other boards we serve on. I think this is going to be a great connection for council to have regular updates, and I have asked Mike to be sure that he was doing that, and he is, I think, happy to bring that back to us. So as I outlined, there was some discussion on Wednesday about people not really, council not really understanding completely how this nomination was going to go. As I said, it's the same as all the other five nominations that we did. It was also written very specifically in the referral that went in, along with all the other referrals that go on Friday. So I just want to say there's no, if you read all the referral, it was outlined exactly what we would be doing, and I'm just, I'm excited to put this forward. I'm excited to have one of us on the board. I'm excited to have him report back. So with that, that is my presentation. Would you like me to make the official, okay?
Yes, please.
I recommend a move that we appoint Mike Nugent as ex officio non-voting member to the Missoula Redevelopment Agency Board with a term ending December 31st, 2025.
Thank you very much. All right, the motion is on the floor, and I will entertain public comment this evening on regular business items, and so if there's anybody here that has public comment in regards to this, now's your chance. Not seeing any in the room? How about online? Mr. Larson, is your hand raised for this agenda item?
Yes, Matt Larson, more three. It just seems a little redundant to me as city council approves all MRA stuff anyway. It seems like, like we're just kind of jumping through more hoops with MRA to just jump through them, but you know, if it makes everybody feel better, let's go ahead and appoint these members of the council onto the MRA as a supervisory, whatever, whatever. It just, it just seems like we run in circles with MRA all the time, and they remit money from the budget, to our general budget and back and forth, and we continually have a huge issue with just getting together our general budget. So hopefully this will mend that. That's what I look forward to, is no more budget shortfalls come budgeting time.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Not seeing any additional public comment, then we'll go ahead and move to city council comments. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. So I'm going to try to share my screen here, if I may. So last week I objected to this nomination based on administrative grounds, and what I'm talking about in particular is our city council rules and why it feels a necessity to follow those rules and processes such as what we're deliberating here. And specifically, Rule 32, as it applies to appointments to various boards, agencies, and commissions, and clearly this is, MRA is an established board that we're seeking to put someone on council and ex official status on that board. And in particular, I would address subsection G here, which is appointment of city council members to boards and commissions, and I'll just read it here, if I may, verbatim, it's very short. When a position exists that requires the appointment of a city council member, committee of the whole is a designated committee. The chair of the committee of the whole will announce the opening at a Missoula council meeting. Interested council members shall submit an email to the city clerk indicating their interest. Committee of the whole shall make a recommendation for appointment. A majority of council members elected is required to approve this type of appointment. So with what I just read there, my concern, going back to committee of the whole last week, is whether or not we have applied Section G of Rule 32 to this process, and I would contest that we have not. I don't believe we have, in fact, announced the opening at a previous Missoula City Council meeting that this board ex official position be created and then filled. I can't speak to whether or not my colleague, Council Member Nugent, I had submitted emails to the city clerk office, but I would suggest it's a moot point if this, this position wasn't announced at a regular city council meeting. And in the end of the day, it's the committee of the whole, respectfully, it's not the president of the council that makes a decision or recommendation for appointment of this position. So, you know, I would say, you know, for those reasons and for the sake of following our own rules, quite frankly, I feel that this process should be, whatever motion needs to be made to abandon the current referral, to abandon the recommend motion, and to begin again with subsection G of Rule 32 in mind of our city council rules. And if I may, whatever motion we deliberate, I'd like to have a chance to then comment on whatever motion goes forward separately, if I may.
Thank you. Yes, that's not a problem. Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Before we move on to other comments, I do want to note that this is an agency, Missoula Redevelopment Agency is an agency, city agency, I do not believe contemplated under Item G, boards and commissions, but I would appreciate hearing from the city clerk on that. President Cheryl, please go ahead before we ask Claire to speak to that.
And Claire can come in and speak to that in any way. None of these other boards and commissions have been done that way. The referral very clearly stated the way that we planned on doing it, so I don't think we're outside of any of our council rules on that. I think Claire, I'm happy for Claire to weigh in. I obviously do not take that as a friendly amendment, and we have a motion on the floor right now, so I think we need to dispense with that motion first.
Thank you, Counselor Cheryl. And Ms. Trimble, is there a decipherable question there that you're able to help answer?
I will confess that I haven't looked into it carefully.
City council, or excuse me, city attorney for civil, Mr. Sudbury, has left for the evening, otherwise I would have called on him for clarification. So sorry to put you on the spot there, and that's fine.
Not a problem. I would just need a few minutes to digest what the point of contention was between the rule and the current motion.
Not a worry. All right, so there is a motion on the floor, and we'll go ahead and move on to Counselor Becerra.
Thank you. I think my question was about what constitutes a board versus an agency ex officio representative of council on that agency board, so getting clarification would be great. But I also wanted to say that there was communication from Council President Cheryl about the intent to make a nomination, and she asked in that correspondence if there was interest from anyone else on council so she could make her decision based on the interest. And as far as we know, no one spoke until Wednesday. So regardless of the technicalities, I just want to say that this is an appointment that would solidify or reinforce our connection with MRA board and would allow us to have more information about the different things that the MRA board is deciding on. I think the role of that ex officio representative from council could be of benefit to the board as well, as you know, that person would bring council perspective on some of the issues that are, you know, in front of the MRA board. For that reason, I do think that experience on council, experience with MRA and MRA projects throughout, you know, years is important and should be something that weighs on that decision. I think Mike brings that, and additionally, I think that Mike Nugent has a lot of experience and expertise in subjects that are, that pertain to the MRA and MRA decisions, so I am fully supportive. I would like that clarification, though, either from our clerk or city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Becerra. I have sent a text message to Ryan Sudbury to see if he's available, and just wanted to note that as we move through additional comments, Counselor Vesika?
Thanks. First of all, I'm just upset with the process and not with the person that's being nominated, because I think that Mike would be great at this job. I'm just a little bit concerned about the process because the Rule 32, Part C, states, "For each board, agency, or commission, the council president in consolidation with the committee chair," which happens to be the council president, "most closely aligned with the work of the board will designate a specific council committee to oversee appointments. The designated committee will interview and assess applicants for council appointment and will review the mayor's recommendations for appointments. The committee will then recommend appointment actions to the council as a whole." And I feel that last Wednesday, the process was very rushed, and it was very quickly moving, and we didn't have time to completely process it or put our own names up for application for this process. So that is why I'm really concerned about this, and I feel like, I understand that there is no ill intent regarding this, and I don't want there to be any, I don't want anybody to think that I have any ill intent against anybody that is moving this forward. I'm just frustrated with the process, and I am totally, totally down to have Mike be the person for this, because I do think that he'd be great for it. But my colleague, Mr. Campbell, expressed interest, and I think he would be great at it as well, and I would just want him to have a fighting chance at it and have a proper vote for it, like the rules of city council do state. So that is my frustration with this.
Thank you for your comment, Counselor Vesika, and so civil attorney Sudbury has joined us, and I'll just see if folks wish to continue with their questioning before he has the chance to address process questions. So Counselor Carlini, I'll look to you first to see if you wish to make a comment or ask a question first.
If somebody has the clarification on the rule, that would be the best thing first, yeah.
Okay, and so, Mr. Sudbury, I sent you a text message, but if you need us to clarify the question that is being pondered here, please let us know.
Yeah, that would be great. Sorry, I took off early. My mother's in town, so I thought, I thought I was going to escape without any further need, so I apologize for jetting early tonight.
Not a worry.
So, but I have not heard the ongoing discussion here, so I apologize.
So thanks for being here, and I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Cheryl to summarize the question on the floor.
So, and I may have Bob give you what his concern is. So in appointing a council member to the MRA board as an ex officio member, what we had done with the referral is that we did that appointment the same as the Health Board, MCAT, Community Forum, Transportation Policy Advising Committee, and the Local Emergency Planning Board, which when we did those appointments, the way that we did them in January, was that the president, you know, spoke with the different people that she, she in this case, planned on nominating for those positions, that she asked them to, you know, serve in those positions, and then we voted on all of those as council. So council voted, I didn't just appoint them for those positions. The MRA rule, or the MRA referral, I'm sorry, I'm getting really tired. The MRA referral position, as it was written, was to conform with the same five other designations, formal designations that were nominated by the board president and then voted on by council. And Rule 32, I think Rule 32 is referring more to all of the appointments we do for outside, people outside of council being appointed to our board, the different designations, the ones that we interview. We've never interviewed a council member for any of these. Since I've been on council five years, we've never interviewed or had names put in to the council president for any of the formal or informal designations. So there's some concern about that. Do you want to add what you had read, Bob, so he can say, his concern is that we're not, he doesn't think we should be doing it that way, based on our council rules. But if that's the case, then we shouldn't, any of the designations that we have on the Health Board, on emergency planning, all of that, I think falls under the same thing.
If I may respond or add to that, Madam Mayor?
Please, Counselor Campbell, go ahead. Thank you.
Let's see, it'd probably be best if I share my screen again. And, Mr. Sudbury, can you see this share?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm just going to start off right off the top, Rule 32, appointments to various boards, agencies, and commissions. Purpose: In order to assure the greatest involvement and participation of boards, agencies, and commissions, in order to achieve competent and qualified appointments to those committees, it is deemed necessary to establish a procedure for making appointments to the various boards, agencies, and commissions. To me, that point is pretty self-evident, pretty clear, but if I go down to particularly Section Z or G here, which I think is applicable section for a situation such as this, appointment of city council members to boards and commissions, the MRA is a board, and we're looking to appoint a city council member to the board, and the paragraph below it talks about, position exists, appointment of a city council member, committee of the whole is a designated committee, and we did go through committee of the whole last week, so we checked that box. The chair of the committee of the whole will announce the opening of a Missoula City Council meeting. I contend that has not been completed. Interested council members shall submit an email to the city clerk indicating their interest. I don't know whether or not colleague Mr. Nugent did any sort of communication in the city clerk's office in that regard, but it's a moot point to me because the preceding requirement wasn't met with the notification of the opening of a previous city council meeting. And then it goes on to say, committee of the whole shall make a recommendation for appointment. The committee of the whole, so to that, I take that to mean the entire body of the committee of the whole shall make a recommendation for appointment. And, you know, I would just add, with regard to my placement on the Local Emergency Planning Committee, I was recommended for that position by Councilwoman Vesika via email, and I did via email submit, per this very rule, Rule 32, my nomination for that position in email form to the city clerk and to that position in mail, in email form to the city clerk and to the council president at that time. So I just want to make sure that that is on the record and I did in fact comply with Rule 32G. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Campbell. So, Mr. Sudbury, have we given you enough time to catch up there and provide any guidance for the discussion?
Yeah, I think I got it. I mean, effectively, the question is, are we prohibited by rule from having city council vote to approve appointing Counselor Nugent to this committee? I mean, there's a couple of somewhat funky things here. This, this is not, there is no requirement to post a city council member to the MRA board. This is sort of a new thing, is my understanding that city council is engaging in, which is, I think, well within its purview to appoint an ex officio member. So I'm not 100% sure it fits under subsection G where a position exists that requires the appointment of a city council member. This is sort of city council deciding that it wants to appoint a city council member to this. It's not, it's not in the bylaws that a city council member is required to be on it, at least not to my knowledge. So not 100% sure, but, but it sounds to me like Counselor Campbell has made it clear that he's interested. He's learned about this position. He's provided his interest to the, to the members of the body here. And you guys still have the decision to make to vote a member of council on to this position that you've created. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure I understand the, you know, there's no must sort of clauses in here. So I, I would be hesitant to say that you're unable to vote on this because of some procedural infirmity. I think Counselor Campbell has made his interests known. Somebody could make a motion to vote Counselor Nugent in. Somebody could make a motion. I don't know if there's a motion on the floor already. Somebody could, you know, move to amend to replace Counselor Nugent with Counselor Campbell. There's still the opportunity to fix this infirmity. Now, if council wants to send it back to the committee of the whole to hear its members that are interested, sort of statement of reasons why, you know, that's also allowed. So I, I don't think, I don't think I've got a silver bullet sort of answer here, like you must do X, Y, or Z based on this interpretation of the rules. I think we're well within a set of gray areas here because this is, it's a new position that isn't provided for elsewhere in the rules or in other, in other bylaws.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sudbury. Do you mind if we move through the remaining questions or discussion prior to making a, moving forward? Does that sound okay?
There's already a motion on the floor
Yep.
that I made. So I don't have anything else to say. I appreciate you waiting.
Great. Thank you. So Counselor Carlino?
Yeah, and I'll add that any of us could go to the board meetings too. But I think the real issue is that this, this board is unilaterally spending tax money. And we have a, as a council, just voted a few months ago to continue to allow this board, who is unelected, to spend taxpayer money. And frankly, it's, it's making it less democratic for taxpayers in town. Taxpayers in town should get to vote on who they want or how they want their tax money to be spent. But since the city council has basically extinguished almost all of our power around MRA and this millions of taxpayer dollars that are spent every year, it's a little bit pointless. But I think having somebody go would still be worthwhile for like educational purposes. But we've already extinguished all of our power. I think we should bring it back and make it more democratic where people of Missoula can vote on the people that spend their tax dollars. But for the sake of ex officio member, I think anybody would be fine.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. And Counselor Vasika.
Thanks. I'm not going to drive this into the wall because I know that is late. And I just wanted to say that according to Rule 32, Part J, I am frankly embarrassed because I, as a senior member on this council, I advised folks that the nominating process would be that we would nominate people to be a part of this and that we would vote by name. And that's how we changed the vote a couple of years ago, or last year. And I'm frankly embarrassed that I advised people that that's how it would happen because apparently this was just a, the council president or the chair of the committee of the whole, who are the same, get to just deem that person that they choose to do that. And I'm really uncomfortable saying this because I think that Mike would be great at this. I'm just really uncomfortable with the process. And I think that with development of a new board or new agency, a new process like this needs to be dictated on the floor and in public and so everybody knows about it. So I'm just uncomfortable with the process. Nothing against the nomination. I just wanted that to be on record that I'm just really uncomfortable with this. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Vasika. And Counselor Cheryl?
I just want to add that I, this was not an appointment. This was a nomination and that every single member of this body gets to vote on this nomination. And if they deem the president's nomination unfit to serve in this capacity, they will not vote for that person. So that, that is the process that all of the sponsors agreed on. It was a referral that a certain number of city council people came up with. And you have the ability right now, since there's a motion on the floor, to vote down that nomination if that's what you choose. This is not an appointment, which would be a very different thing if I, if as a council president, we were saying we were appoint, I was appointing someone without council's blessing. So in order for, and I'm sorry, Mike, that you're going through some of this, but in order for Mr. Nugent to serve this body, the majority of this body, we'll need to vote for him.
All right. Thank you for your comments. That wraps up council comments. And so, all right, Counselor Campbell, and let's make it quick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I appreciate that the recommended motion stands. You know, I would just say, my frustration all along has been just in my mind, the way the process should work for this whole thing here. It had nothing to, I totally concur that we should have somebody on MRA board, ex officio, to be a good link and good conduit of what's going on between the MRA board and us. To me, it only improves communication, only improves transparency. So there's no really downside to having a member of council here representing ex official's status on the MRA board. So that all said, nomination before us is Councilmember Mike Nugent. And I, I completely support his nomination. Again, it was frustration with process. I, I think my colleague would do a fantastic job. I, I think he has a good understanding of certainly, you know, the inner workings of Missoula Redevelopment Agency, particularly as it relates to land use and planning and development. And I also think that he understands my concerns, the concerns I had with regards to, you know, how we utilize, you know, tax increment financing going forward, to what extent, what the risks are involved during the cost benefit analysis for, you know, how those funds are utilized and just have, you know, some sort of, you know, good oversight of, you know, that operation. I, I think always works to serve the citizens of the city well and in terms of increased transparency of local government and of a board that, like Councilmember Carlino mentioned, is, you know, otherwise, you know, simply an appointed board and not an elected board. So any more interaction we can get with elected officials is, is a good thing.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Counselor Campbell. And Counselor Jordan, you had a question? Okay. All right. You bet. All right. Then that wraps up parliamentary debate on this item. There is a motion on the floor and we will take a rule call vote. Ms. Trimble.
Voting on item 9.1.1C.1B, the nomination of Mike Nugent to, as an ex officio member to the MRA, beginning with Nugent.
Abstain.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Leno?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
And Jordan?
Yes.
And that is nine in favor and one abstention.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I want to also just extend my appreciation for a robust discussion, especially as things are evolving. And this is a new council nomination to the MRA Board of Directors. So looking forward to seeing how this goes. Congratulations, Counselor Nugent. All right. That wraps up that agenda item. That means that we are done with regular business and we can now move on to public comment on non-agenda items. So I'll look to folks in the room and welcome anybody to come on up. Please identify yourself by saying your name and spelling your last name, please. Thank you.
Good night, or good evening, I guess. My name is Kevin Hunt. I live in Ward One. And I'm here to say that process matters, rules matter, laws matter, and our glorious state constitution matters. You know, it's well known and we're very proud that we have in Article Two of our state constitution, an inalienable right to a clean and healthful environment. But what most people don't know is that that is only one of two clean and healthful environment provisions in our state constitution. Article Nine, Section One places an obligation, a mandatory obligation on not just the state, but on quote, "every person" unquote, "to maintain and improve a clean and healthful environment." I got to thinking about this today when I read an article about one of our Missoula citizens being assaulted while cleaning up the riverfront, calling the police, and they refused to do anything about it. And then I read further in this article, someone I happen to know was, who has, at his own expense, cleaned up hundreds of tons of refuse and trash from our riverfront, was arrested and jailed. Now, I'm going to really look forward to watching, if he goes to trial, watching this trial and seeing how a prosecutor for this city tries to get a conviction on somebody for complying with the mandatory obligation under the Montana Constitution to improve and maintain our clean and healthful environment, which the city is not doing. I know there's money problems and all this, but this isn't right. This is absolutely wrong. And I'm here to speak out about it. And this hasn't, this isn't something that's been, you know, greatly propagated by the news media. I got this from Gabriel Lafayette's news email that he sends out. And so I've posted this on, I posted that article on Nextdoor and it's, it's probably going to have 2,400 views. And for once, like Adam Kinzinger, who broke ranks with his fascist fellow Republicans and tried to establish justice when we had for the first time an attempted coup d'etat in this country, I'm willing to accept the brickbats and complaints from liberals and some of my fellow socialists for, for speaking in congruence with some of our more right wing citizens in this town who have been complaining about homeless policy and so forth. But this is just beyond the pale. And that's going to be a great trial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Are there others in the audience that wish to provide public comment this evening? Come on up.
Hi. My name is Linda Wolf, W-O-L-F-E. I live in Ranch Club. Bryn Spescher, she is being featured tonight on a Dr. Phil, it's, it's a new Dr. Phil primetime that just started. She is, she, she was convicted of cannabis-induced psychosis for stabbing her friend 108 times and he died, and her dog she killed. And then she stabbed herself. So she was in a really bad cannabis-induced psychosis. I'm not against weed, just saying. I don't, I don't say, I don't want anybody to smoke weed. But what I am saying is it's dangerous and, and the THC levels are very dangerous, the way it is now. So anyway, my son and I, Kobe, Kobe's my son, we are, we were on the, we were on Dr. Phil about a month ago. And our show will be aired sometime in the first, probably within the first couple, week or two of May. And I'm going to email you guys on the date of that so you guys can see that. Gwen Jones is aware of this too. And we've had conversations and she's part of, of the group that I'm involved with, with the Youth for Substance Abuse Coalition for the city and the county. Anyway, my son has had three episodes of cannabis-induced psychosis. And within a two-year period, beginning his semester, first semester of college, it was just absolute hell, what we went through, my husband and I. It was just absolute hell. So I've been speaking out about it, never thought I would ever have to, never thought it would ever be a problem. But I am telling you, the high THC levels that we have right now and the amount of cannabis shops that we have right now is insane. No other place has, has this, the amount of shops that we have in Missoula. Chelsea Bodnar is the wife of Seth Bodnar, who's on our, our coalition. I've had an opportunity to talk to Seth Bodnar as well. And he feels the same way that Chelsea Bodnar does. And she's a pediatrician. She deals with children who have had this affected, have them, they've been affected by this. And she's a real advocate for this. So there's a man named Ben Court. And he, he spoke in Billings, he spoke in Great Falls, he spoke in many different towns around Montana. And he is an advocate. So anyway, he, he'll be coming up in May 9th to speak in Missoula, sometime around May 9th. And Gwen Jones knows the date. So I'm really hoping that you guys all listen to what he has to say. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to talk. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Wolf. Others in the audience wish to make public comment this evening?
Hi, my name is Brad Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N. I come here for you guys today to speak about a couple sweep actions taking place last week. One of them was a couple hours before the work group meeting we were all at, I guess most of us were at. It was on the rail property that happened below freezing. It was snowing. The people that were there all had their tents slashed, all their property was destroyed and taken away from them. The next day, we had another sweep in Lyons Park. I was arrested for the first time in my life. The park's employee used misinformation and stretched the truth to get the cops to arrest me. He said he was there to provide cleanup services and for my safety, I didn't call anyone for 911. He had no reason to be there for my safety. I felt safe. And my camp is very clean, so I didn't need him to help me clean up my camp. As a result of being swept, the new area I was moved to, I had a concerned neighbor come out and assault me with a weapon. He is now facing felony charges and he is an ex homeless person who is now also at risk of becoming homeless because of his actions. I just would like to urge you guys to come up with a safe space for us to be immediately. What we have going on right now is inadequate and, and doesn't really help us. You know, there's a lot of us that don't have a space to be. There isn't enough shelter space for all of us. So even if you could just come up with a safe campsite, maybe it's not compliant with shelter space rulings of the court, but it could at least allow us a place to be where we don't have to worry about being assaulted or swept and turned into criminals. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Jeffrey Oswald, O-S-W-A-L-D, Ward 4. I have met Brad before when I was out walking around the town, talking to folks on the street, and he has the tidiest camp. There's nothing but his tent. He doesn't keep anything outside of it. It's all very compact and well-maintained. And the reason that there's an increase in people out there, and I mentioned it a couple weeks ago when I was here, is that Johnson Center, people are fleeing the place. I met a woman there last week, I believe it was, and I invited her over for coffee and breakfast. She seemed very stressed out, and as she spent time there, she kind of relaxed and started telling me about stuff. And she pointed out that she had these really nice high-top shoes with Velcro on them. And she said, "That's a really good thing, because that way, when they try to take them off while I'm sleeping, then I wake up." Apparently, stealing shoes off of people's feet when they're sleeping at the Johnson Center is a common thing. And I think, given that sort of climate, and there are a lot more stories I could tell that people have been telling me about the place, I think a moratorium on these sweeps of people's camps is really in order. If there's not, like, some real crime that's happening around these camps to the public, rolling up on them when the snow's falling and forcing them to move is just cruel and unusual punishment for their situation. As the finding of the Ninth Circuit Court upheld, it's cruel. It's cruel to do this to these people. There's a lot of people out there that they've just lost their homes, and they're walking around with everything they own that they value, that they could salvage, and they're losing that, too, for no reason other than cruelty. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Oswald. Others in the audience this evening wish to provide public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Davis, councilors. It's exciting to have this public comment period at the end of the meeting because-
Your name one more time. Your name for the record, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I always forget this. I am James Crosby, C-R-O-S-B-Y. Thank you for the reminder. Just so excited to make my point. It's fun to see the city working together. It's fun to see people putting their personal interests aside and watching the city at work. We are not at a crossroads in terms of the homelessness situation. We are deep in the situation already. And with summer coming, we are at a point where we need a solution, even if it's temporary. And with sticky-wicket topics like this, I like to think of analogies or metaphors. And if you have a pipe leaking in your house, and you hear that drip, 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 every one of those drips is causing damage. And while a Band-Aid is not the perfect solution, a bucket is a necessary step. So as we approach summer, and as we know that the population of people experiencing homelessness is growing, we need something to address that quickly. I appreciate all of the work that people have been doing to come up with a long-term solution. But after months of trying, a solution is not evident, and no neighborhood has decided to take on the burden like the Johnson Streets Shelter. So it might be a good idea to create a rotation where people can move to different neighborhoods so that no single neighborhood has to bear the brunt. Now, there is a very specific piece of logistics that needs to be addressed on behalf of our delicate ecosystem. When I lived in my car, every morning, I had a bottle, not this bottle, but a bottle like it, for the necessary biological needs. When you wake up, you gotta go to the bathroom, right? So, not this bottle, but a bottle like it was my first choice. After that, I then had to go to find a place to put it. Without a bottle, or without a place to put it, that is ending up in our drinking water. And what tourist wants to float the Clark Fork next to a turd? Who wants to walk our downtown streets with human waste? So while this drip is occurring in our community, we need to think about the logistics of what happens for people that don't have a solution right now. Oath houses, public restrooms, things that people can use to keep our community clean. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your work.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Crosby. Others in the audience wish to make public comment this evening. Okay, not seeing any in the audience. How about folks online? Mr. Larson?
Yes, Matt Larson here, Ward 3. I think we're now at 10:00 PM, and just now getting to general comments. We've had comments about how the city is basically violated constitutional rights fashion. We also can no longer email all city councilors, although we can do it through a web form with questions that we have to answer before the web form can be sent. And it just seems that there's an ever-increasing amount of hoops that have to be jumped through to engage our city government. And it's just really weird to me that this is happening in conjunction with the houselessness crisis and a lack of any sort of substantive plan, either way. It just seems as though we're treading water, and we could really be doing a lot better. We could really be a lot more transparent, and we could really be a lot more engaging with the city as a whole and the community. But we're not. We're not even, we're not even broadcasting or live-streaming the Houselessness Committee meeting. And there's very little public engagement there at that meeting as well. It's really, it's belittling to the community at large, and those that want to be engaged, but that have jobs and have lives. We can't address this huge elephant in the room without some of the tools that the city has at its disposal, but chooses not to use, such as live-streaming the Houselessness Meeting and other, you know, basic, making a basic houselessness plan that includes something besides the Johnson Streets Shelter, as many people don't feel safe there, and it's not adequate shelter space for all. This is, this is coming on months now that we're waiting for an answer from the city. So we are approaching summer, and yes, very much as other commenters have pointed out, our precious river and tourist attractions are very much in the balance here.
Mr. Larson, you're after three minutes.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. I think that we need action. We need less, less obfuscation and more transparency from our city government. We need more engagement.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Larson. All right, looking online, seeing if there's any additional, and I do not see any. So that wraps up our public comment on non-agenda items. Thank you very much. It's a long evening. I'll move on to communications from the mayor in regards to the fifth urban camping working group session. So I'll just remind the members of the public that are watching, that our plan originally was for three to five working sessions, and we've chosen to take five. Those started at the end of February, and working with everybody's schedule and council's committee schedule, we were able to accomplish the fifth by the 1st of May. And this is noticed with our committee meetings and also on the city council agenda, along with all other posted meetings. This fifth meeting will be at the location of the fourth, because the election center is not available to us right now. They're conducting elections. So we will be again at Stockman Bank, which is located at 3615 Brooks. You can access the downstairs meeting room, which is fully accessible, so you can access it by stair, or you can access it by elevator. And it is on the east side of the building. If you drive there, you're asked to park either along the street on Door Lane, or across the street in the church parking lot, and there's instructions posted at the door there. And I'll just mention that I've been really pleased to see the number of public that is engaged with us. We've received quite a bit of public comment during our urban camping working groups, and so I appreciate members of the public providing a diverse set of perspectives. I'll also encourage folks to reach out directly to their ward representatives, or make comment on our Engage Missoula, or again, on the city council email form in regards to this. So certainly would love to hear from you there. I just want to mention and just do a great shout-out for all the amazing things that Missoula has going on on Saturday. I had the trifecta of having the opportunity to Run for Trees in the morning, which is Parks and Rec and a program of Run Wild. They, folks that donated to that as part of their registration contributions went to Climate Smart Missoula for supporting their new tree program. So that was a lot of fun, albeit very cold in the morning, a lot of wind. And then off to the International Wildlife Film Festival for their Wild Walk Parade. And that is going on through the 25th. So if you haven't had a chance to catch out some films at the Roxy Theater, they also do allow folks, there are streaming opportunities there, but one of the many things that are happening in Missoula. And then I just wanted to thank those that invited me to participate in the University of Montana's 55th Annual Cayoyo Powwow. It was an honor to be recognized and be able to be on the floor during the grand entry. And it was folks that I'd grown up with here in Montana, and saw folks from far and wide that are dancers. And it was really a beautiful opportunity to see the diverse number of cultures coming together here in Missoula. And if you have a chance to go to it next year, it's free. There are artisans from all over, and it's just a wonderful thing to participate in. So I'll go ahead and leave it there. Last thing I'll mention is that there is Wednesdays for the Mayor, or Wednesdays with the Mayor this coming Wednesday at the library. And our topic this week, it's from 6:00 to about 7:00, 7:15, and our topic is our Bear Smart Ordinance. So in effect, we have been working with folks in certain areas of our valley to get bear-resistant garbage cans, and that's a pretty big move for us as a way to help protect not only people, children, dogs, animals, but also bears themselves. So it's, as you know, a fed bear is a dead bear, so this is a great way to keep our bears safe as well as our neighbors. So I'll go ahead and pass it on to the city council comments, and pass it on to Councilor Carlino.
Spending a lot of time thinking about what I would say about the development on top of the Chinese cemetery after just kind of repeating mistakes of the council made 120 years ago, and still to this day disregarding that. But I was more wanting to speak to, we just heard from our colleague Brad, who is on the urban camping working group with us, and just take a couple minutes to tell us about what our policies are like for him on the ground. And I'm pretty, I am just really disappointed, and this is what we do as a society. For thousands and thousands of years, he could have, you know, sat with the, anybody could have just sat on a piece of grass and been totally fine. But we became so much, so advanced as a society that we have a whole team of people to go out there and slash people's tents, arrest people, move them. But we have, we don't have the advancements to just give them a simple place to be. And that is just really, I don't even know what to say about it, but I, that is definitely not what the future is going to be like. And I am just hoping that that's not what it's going to look like after this urban camping working group. We need to have a more robust system where we have adequate places to tell everybody where they can go safely. But the fact that we have so much resources to stop them from just trying to exist is really sad, and I hope we don't continue like this.
Thank you, Councilor Carlino. Councilor Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. I just want to point out, there was a comment made by a public commenter earlier about ammunition and the cost of ammunition in Missoula Police Department. I just want to point out that there is collective bargaining agreement in place, and part of that collective bargaining agreement, I have it pulled up here, is employer will supply 100 rounds of ammunition to each officer, each sworn officer on department on a monthly basis. That's for ongoing training, and in my estimation, that's the bare minimum that one needs to remain proficient with a firearm, which I think the taxpayers, I think the citizen really at large would agree, is kind of important. So I just want to get that out there. And then one other thing I'll bring up is tomorrow, I'm going to be attending a cleanup underneath the Reserve Street Bridge off of Reserve Street. That's going to take place tomorrow from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's going to be meeting at the 700 Block in North Davis, and I hope to be down there for a while. But they've made arrangements with Montana Department of Transportation to get access, sample the bridge down there for, it's a combined tour of what's happened in that area over the past year, and cleanup of wherever it might be down there. So I hope to spend some time down there tomorrow. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Campbell. Councilor Farmer?
Thanks. And on that same note, I just want to say thank you to the Clark Fork Coalition for hosting their annual Clark Fork Cleanup, which was yesterday, and there were several, many volunteers. I hoped to attend, but unfortunately, I had sick kiddos. But I just wanted to say thank you to the Clark Fork Coalition to hosting that annual cleanup, and for all the folks that came out to volunteer.
All right, thank you. Councilor Jordan?
Thank you. Couple things. First thing, I just want to clear the record based on some public comment, that Mr. Travis Matier was not arrested for picking up trash. He was arrested for violating an order of protection against a person who's very afraid of him. So I wanted to set the record straight. The second thing is, too, I also just agree with what my colleague, Mr. Carlino, said about what happened in recent sweeps, and how disheartening it is that we are so capable of dehumanizing people who have nothing. My biggest fear right now is that SCOTUS is going to allow cities like ours to criminalize homelessness. I listened to a lot of the deliberations today, and the questions have nothing to do with humanity. They have to do with classifications and picking apart things that have nothing to do with looking after our neighbors who don't have as much as they need or deserve. And I do hope that what comes out of the urban camping working group isn't spurned by the potential loss of protections for our homeless community members. I'm really sorry what happened to you. It wasn't okay. And I'm going to try really hard to make sure things like that don't keep happening. It's not okay. And I will rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jordan. Councilor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I listened to the Grants Pass case, I guess, arguments at Supreme Court's warning as well. And, you know, it was striking because it felt like all the questions and all the arguments made by every attorney almost was in a reality that isn't actually on the ground. And to me, there are so many failures of our system federally, at the state, that have kind of led it to local governments across the country being the front line for an issue that they are in no way capable of solving or handling. And I was just sitting there listening to, you know, these definitions of what is-is, and all this stuff that really is completely irrelevant to anything that's actually going to make a difference in making people's lives better. And it just struck me that, you know, some of the comments we hear from people, and things around time and place and things like that, they were, they were almost acknowledged and moved on from so quickly, but nobody took the time to say, "The system is failing. The system's failing everybody." And I think- And I think that's unfortunate because, you know, if I'd been one of the attorneys arguing, I might have used my closing to talk about how much I think the federal level and states are also failing at this. This is not just a local issue. And one of the things in this work group that, you know, has come up is, how's the city going to solve it? Where can they, where can people stay on city land and stuff like that? You know, there's public land that's not city land, it's state land, there's federal land. There are other groups that should be helping. And, you know, I hear this suggestion of a cleanup under Reserve Street, and that MDT is going to let people in and do all that. And it's like, that's fine, but that's about the extent of what, in my opinion, the state is actually doing to help solve this, which is next to nothing. And so I would like us to see maybe as part of that Enrezola Working Group, that we start putting more pressure on our partners at the federal level and at the state level to say that they are part of the solution as well as us. Because that, my takeaway from the Grants Pass discussion is that it's not going to change anything. But just my opinion.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Nugent.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate. I just assumed I was next. I appreciate my colleague, Mr. Nugent's comments, and I know that everyone around this horseshoe thinks about this more than, society thinks about this more than we should need to because we have too much of it going on. And I agree with you. I think, I think there's so much that's almost esoteric at some level about the discussion. I listen to podcasts, as my colleagues know, all the time, and this is a topic that I listen to a lot on. We talk around this horseshoe about the cut to mental health care funding. There's a fascinating podcast, what's the name of it? Are you listening to it too? Okay, he'll tell us. But just talking about the failure of our mental health care system and closing of mental health care facilities years ago and how that decision has spiraled. So, you know, that has been a piece of it. The wealth disparity in this country is absolutely awful. You know, lots of talk about that as well. So, and then, you know, the on-the-ground response and how communities are left to deal with it. So, what is it?
It's called Lost Patients.
Lost Patients.
And it's an NPR and Seattle Times podcast.
Fascinating. If anyone has time to listen to it, I don't know if you've gotten through it, but it's a multi-part series. Anyway, so you guys got me thinking about that. I wanted to respond to, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name, that commented about the THC-induced psychosis, because I have a good friend that is an ER doc, and he is seeing this, and he's seen it in kids in particular. And I asked him, I said, "Well, you know, but, but like, they bounce back, right? Like, you know, you get them in there and they, you know?" And he goes, "We don't know yet." He goes, "We don't know. This is something that is like, we haven't seen, and we haven't seen this happening." And I mean, I am, I'm one that wanted this legalized, so I'm not like, I'm not, they, we haven't done a good job at kind of putting some sideboards on it, and it is affecting our youth. And I think that we really need to, we need to be careful about what that's doing to developing minds. It's a real thing. I mean, it's psychosis, it's schizophrenic symptoms that just pop out of nowhere, and they happen fast. I think you can attest to that. They happen fast. It was kind of terrifying to me. So I, that's a real thing, and my daughters don't believe it, so I had to tell them, have them talk to our friend that's ER doc, that it really is happening. And I think it's something that, you know, along with all our concern about mental health care funding being cut and addictions programs being cut, we need to take this serious, and we need to get on top of it more quickly than not.
Thank you, Councilor Cheryl. Councilor Savage.
I also listened to the Supreme Court oral arguments today. Thank you, Mr. Nugent, for the heads-up on that this morning with a text message. And I think the thing that was just the most resounding for me was, I think I tuned in, like, looking for answers, and I didn't find any. And that was, that was pretty frustrating. It did reaffirm my, I don't ever want to argue in front of the Supreme Court, so there's that, but it was, I agree that it really felt like it was caught in process and not any real solutions. I also just wanted to say thank you to everybody that hung in there tonight for public comment. And I think it's late, and we all know that it's late, and it's hard to know when public comment will come up. And I know some of you left and came back, but I do really appreciate that you stayed, and I appreciate hearing all the things that you had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Savage.
I'll pass tonight.
Okay. All right, how about councilors online? Any comment this evening? Councilor Becerra.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to thank Ms. Wolf for coming to counsel today and sharing with us her experience and her concerns surrounding cannabis use. It, you know, use and overuse, it is significant, and it really does affect our youth in ways that have long-lasting effects. And I think learning more about it and what we can do in terms of prevention, I think it's important, and I'm happy to participate in that. I also wanted to say that I too listened to the Supreme Court Grant Pass case today. And, you know, my takeaway was that there's an incredible amount of responsibility placed on local governments to address this issue via legislature and laws and ordinances at the local level. And yet, significant help to get to the root of the problem, in my opinion, falls almost entirely within the purview of the federal government. So I really do hope that our federal and state partners join us in this conversation and come prepare with potential solutions and what we can do together, because this is something that is going to be affecting our state and local partners as well. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Becerra. And Councilor Vasika.
Thanks. I have four things I want to talk about tonight, and I talk fast, so hopefully it'll be quick. My colleague, Mr. Campbell, was talking about their Reserve Street Bridge cleanup. Kristin, Jordan, and I have done that in the past, and it does take a community to do that. And I would highly recommend anybody who is willing and able to help, please help, because it, we are stores of our own community, and I would highly recommend anybody that can do that, please do that. Let's see here. As I mentioned earlier, to report urban camping in areas and dangerous areas, on the city website, if you go to the main page, if you go to the main page, it says, "How do I?" At the bottom of that list of "How do I?", it says, "Report Urban Camping." So I would recommend folks who are wanting to report urban camping to do that. Three is, oh, so I can understand why folks don't want to wait this long to engage in city government public comment periods. It also is a disservice to the public who wants to comment on agenda items. So it's a clunky change, and it's a, it's a really clunky process. And I hear arguments from both sides, and I agree with both sides. I don't really know what the answer is. I'm just really open to the public input, and I really hope that people will continue giving their input on this, because I don't know what the right answer is on this one. So continue letting me know how it is. And then four, I wanted to let, I wanted to thank all of my colleagues. I want to thank them all for the robust discussions that we have, and I really want to thank them for the robust discussions that we have on the floor. Because I really, I really appreciate all of your thoughts and all of your input, and I have changed my mind multiple times on the floor, and I have taken your ideas and your thoughts into serious consideration. So I just wanted to thank you all very much for indulging me in thoughtful process thinking. So, thank you. And that's all for tonight.
Well said. That's all for tonight. That was a nice way to wrap up a long meeting. Thank you very much, Councilor Vasika. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:25. Thanks, everybody, for coming down tonight.